Mr. Wilson, can I get a roll call?
Yes. District one, Daryl Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
And at large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a form?
I'll see.
Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions that we need to make? Any modifications of any sort? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Danny, I'll give that one to you. Danny Castile's seconds. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda has been approved. Has everyone had a chance to read over the minutes from last meeting? From July 2nd, 2025? Are there any changes, deletions, modifications that we should make to that? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as they stand?
Some moved.
All right, Miss Stephanie moves. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, second.
All right, I'll give Danny the second on that one, too. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Getting into citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting where anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. We have a five-minute timer in effect for public comment. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Also, there are two separate public hearings that are happening today. One for Frayley Town Road and one for Inordinance. This public expression is just for general issues and not specific to those. So if you've got issues specific to those two public hearings, we will have separate public expression for those. Does anyone have any general?
How would like to speak?
Okay.
My name is Charles Larry Williams. And I own property in the Frayley Town area. I also own property along 624 on the south side of the bridge we're talking about abandoning today.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Pardon me?
Yes. If this is specific to the bridge, can you wait till the public hearing for that section?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm here to talk about that.
Okay.
And I'm opposed to the abandonment of that bridge. First of all, that road has served the Frayley Town and the community there in the Duffield area for over 100 years. And that bridge has been there. I grew up right by the Frayley Town Road. Spent a lot of time going up and down that road. I know some of my good neighbors have issues about the road, the bridge, and that being open to two-lane traffic. I just got off the phone with Darrell Simpson from the Virginia Department of Transportation. I put in a request earlier for someone from VDOT to give me a call and update me on the status of that bridge and what was gonna happen. For the ones, the members here that don't know, Virginia has approved funding to replace that bridge. And there's a lot of people in the Duffield area, Frayley Town area, Purchase Ridge area. The whole community think that we are at the bottom of the food chain when it comes to funding. So I think it would be a disservice to abandon that bridge and really close that bridge to two-way traffic. Could I have the mouth?
Sir, there's gonna be a public hearing about this in actress's expression that will give you time to speak.
Oh, okay. I thought this was it.
No, this is not that.
Okay, I apologize.
Very next thing on the agenda. Yes, sir. Sorry, I should have been more clear about that.
Okay, no problem. We'll get.
Well, I'll give you your turn here in a second.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Let's take a toast.
Good morning. I'm Tyce from Snowflake Road and all dirt roads in Scott County. The dirt roads in Scott County, 252 miles of them. And I have to give the Lee County Tree Service an A+ on removing the bushes and the trees on Snowflake Road. I mean, it is, they did a great job. And, but now the dirt roads are still, with the rain, we haven't had to do, deal with the dust, but we've had to do, deal with the ditches in the middle of the road and holes, potholes, and all that. And, and I want to thank VDOT for patching that hole at Addington Frame. I mean, it was a hole and if you didn't see it, but... And we need to get Terry Kilgore to get more money allotted for dirt roads. And for the 252 miles. And if he had to drive over them roads every day, I'd say they would be something done. And we might, might also need to get Griffin, Pillion, Yunkin, all of them involved in this to get more money for dirt roads. Because that's 252 miles in Scott County. That's... And then another thing on the Riverside. Delayed again, you know, we keep, nothing happening over there. So, and that, that hurts the taxpayers in Scott County. So something needs to be on the Riverside property. Needs to be done, something in Scott County. I want to thank you all for all that you all do for us. And the six-year plan, I want to keep Snowflake Road on it, but we've been on it for years and years and years. And I hope when it comes up here, I believe in 2028, I hope we got money. We've been told for years and years and years, since I've been keeping records since 97, no money. 1997. So I hope we can keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan and that we have money. Thank you all. Y'all have a good day.
I'm Charles Taylor. I live on 58 up near Fitchville Road. And just before everybody know, after three years of begging and pleading, I finally got the brush cut back on the road that part of once either on them curves. We all know that VDOT is a major overhaul, but that goes to rhythm, that's beyond us. And I want to personally thank Stephanie. I wasn't at the last meeting, but June meeting, I told her my problem, I couldn't see through them curves and brush beating mirrors off your vehicles. Five weeks later, she brought me work orders, and within a week I saw access. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank y'all, ladies.
Good morning, board. Jerry Baker, Boosie Creek. Chris, you're doing a good job, and I wanted to congratulate Mr. Wilson on his new job. And I've got a little bit of things to say about VDOT. I want to thank them for paving two-mile road on Boosie Creek from the state line at Tennessee State Line from the Peacemakers on up to Timber Tree Branch Road. Maybe a little bit more than two miles. And, but the only thing I see, they done wrong, they paved it. And, but they didn't turn, clean out the side ditches. They already got permission to do it. But anyway, I went down the road Monday, and some guy had moved in here from somewhere else, Tennessee or somewhere, bought a big property down there, and he rented him one of them little Bobcats Estabes. He cleaned out his ditches and laid it on the side of the road. But now, I don't know if it's still there or not, but I wished he went up, all the way up and down the road and got them all cleaned out. But anyway, VDOT is doing a good job with what they've got to work with. I'd like for Michelle and Stephanie to come up and look at Buller Chapel Road. Every time it rains, it washes away. And the preacher up there called them about a week ago, VDOT, and he, they was out the next day. But they sent a tractor up there with a grader blade and raided it all up. Oh, it's beautiful. Couple of days later, come another rain, now it's gone. If they had just cleaned out their ditches and their tiles, they got her done. And anyway, I want you all to come up, write you some work orders on that. You all need to look at this, all the way up that road. And you can't wait to get up to the church. And it's a good road, but it just washes away. But they won't clean out the ditches at all. And they had the machines set 100 yards away over on me. So, anyway, to make a long story short, the best thing to do with VDOT, and I don't think Terry can do a hill of beans, best thing to do with VDOT is to see the two ladies that are running for governor. Ride them, see them, talk to them, and ask them to reinstate VDOT the way it was back prior to 2009 where we had to hell the equipment and the offices to take care of every county. And they might accidentally restore it. I know the previous governor in 2009 took away 2.2 billion dollars away from them. They had to lay off everything. Well, you can see, all you have to do is drive up and down these dirt roads and also the blacktop road. Anyway, getting off of that. Another thing I wanted to ask was, what's the county expect is gonna happen when the Department of Education is shut down? All that money's probably gonna come back to the states for the time being. And don't you think Tennessee might accidentally be asking for all their students back? Because they'd be losing money if that works out like that. I'm not, I'm not up on all this stuff, but it's something to think about. And you might accidentally get a line item, what they spend on line items and long-range forecasts now, if it happens, which I think it already is happening. And I'm about out of time, Chris. I've used about the whole outfit. It's good to see you all. Y'all doing a great job, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Guys, I'm here, Kevin Barnett. I live at 116 Wendover Road in K-City. And I'm here this morning representing the Scott County Ministerial Association Food Pantry. I don't know if any of you are aware, but we're struggling financially currently. Pre-COVID, we were funded by churches and organizations that provided finances for us to pay electric bill, insurance, all those such things. And we built up a little bit of a cushion. Well, when COVID happened, a lot of those small churches went under. They don't exist anymore, and our funding went away. But we've been coasting for a while on that money. But now we come to a point where we had, had to have a decision made if we were gonna seek help or if we're gonna cut down, you know, the ministry and not do food anymore, not help these folks. And I had some numbers here that I wanted to read to you guys. Monthly, the Ministry Association feeds around 700 people in the county. Forty-six percent of those are elderly, and 27% of those are children. We consistently feed that number every single month those people come back. And those are folks that are on fixed income. They're disabled, retired. They're, they're not gonna go out here and get a job because they're not able to do that. That's assistance that we need to continually provide. And our electric bill each month, I think it's around $500 or more, depending on what the AARP charges. We have a nine-foot-by-nine-foot walk-in freezer and a 12-to-14-foot walk-in cooler, as well as some floor freezers and other things that we run. Those things operate 24/7. Those are commercial units. We need that to keep the food cool and frozen so we can provide it to the community. Now, we've, we've been in operation for right at 20 years, and we're a total volunteer organization. We, we don't have any employees. We don't pay salaries or any of that stuff. So the money does go back into the community. And we need help. We, we have a little bit of money left, and we can ride out, I think, for another six months if, if we're lucky, depending on what we get. But here's the thing. With the, the way the government is right now and the sanctions and stuff on food, the USDA is seeing cuts come down. Now, we work with Feeding Southwest Virginia up in Addington. I'm a member of their advisory council. We had a meeting the other day. Hope Christian Ministries, which was operating in Duffield, been there for 11 years, provided the food pantry stuff. They closed down. They don't exist anymore. They, they had to close down that feeding operation. They're still trying to do kids' food and that sort of thing. But that's gonna impact our numbers as well. So the need's out there, and with the cuts, the USDA part of it that we don't have to pay for, the food that's provided by the government, is shrinking. So to fill that gap, we have to purchase more food to make sure that the families get what they need each month, which is higher cost for us. One of the trucks that we paid for the other day was $4,000 for one month for food for these families. And I'm here today to see if you guys can help lighten our burden a little bit on that financially. If, if you guys could contribute, say, $1,000, it, it would help us. And that's what I'm here for today. Are there any questions?
I do have a question for you. Yes, sir. Are you working any with Appalachian Harvest Food Bank in Duffield?
We refer people to them. We don't work directly with them. They have their all-feeding program where they do the boxes each month. I know they work with First Baptist and Dunkan, and they do provide those boxes for families. But it's not enough food to see those families through each month. So when people come to us, I tell them, it's like, guys, we'll provide you with the USDA food. We'll, we'll give you the food that we purchased and stuff. And if you all don't have enough, please visit these other places. I, I send them to Appalachian Harvest. I, I send them to anywhere they can get food. Because just any one organization, we, we can't afford to feed a whole family for the whole month continually. Any other questions?
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sheriff Jeffy, Scott County Sheriff's Office. Today is, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give you our first quarter stats for 2025. The Scott County Dispatch received a total of 12,333 calls for the first quarter of 2025. Of these calls received, we, we received, the Sheriff's Office, 2,523 of these calls were dispatched to us. The total number of domestic calls and protective orders we had was 51. Criminal papers served was 635, with 379 felonies, 256 misdemeanors. Included are 43 drug-related cases and six DUI-related cases. Also, the sheriff's deputies issued 286 traffic summonses and were dispatched to 75 motor vehicle accidents. Deputies served 1,044 civil process papers. They were 414 IVRs, incident-based reports completed, with 86 active, 15 marked unactive, and 133 closed arrests. Sheriff's Office Court Security deputies provided 344 hours of courtroom security, 456 hours of front-door, intra-security. Also, the Sheriff's Office conducted 15 traffic checkpoints. The deputies did 84 out-of-state extraditions, traveled 7,034 miles. Also, the deputies provided two in-state transports. Sheriff's Office provided 169 concealed carry permits, also processed 199 fingerprints. The deputies responded to 47 calls to unlocked vehicles. That's quite a few. They do a good job. We're busy with something daily. It's just, it's just hard to imagine how, I mean, it's kind of busy here the last little bit, so... But hopefully it slows down some. But, but any questions or any, about any of these stats? Or anything I can help you with?
Are you gonna be able to stay for the hearing for the Frayley Town Road? There is an issue with drug-related activity on that road? Or would you like to make comments now about?
I'm not sure we've had any. Jaycee, you know, anything about Frayley Road, drug activity?
I would have to check back here.
Yeah, we'd have to do some checking, see if we've had those calls or something there.
The other thing, the accreditation that you're in the process of doing, can you add to us on that?
We're, hopefully by April next year, we had an assessor came in and looked at everything and gave us what we needed to do and what we have to do, so... We're moving in the right direction. We got the people in the right places now to, to follow through with that, so... It's going well. It looks, it looks promising, so... But we also have, I think there's a grant. Grant that, it's no cost to the county, that's gonna help us establish that also. It's going well, so... Good Lord willing, it'll, it'll all happen, so... Anybody else?
Yeah, Jeff, did you get a call Monday night about Frayley Town Road down there?
Monday night?
Yeah, I think it's Monday or it might have been Tuesday. No, it's Monday.
I, I don't remember one.
There's a gentleman called me, and he said that he'd called it in. And I've heard a couple complaints over the last few months about it down there. And...
Like I said, we're gonna have to check and see what the dispatch received and all that, so... I'm not sure. I, I haven't heard any major down there, so I, I don't want, yes, we may have, but I don't know.
What I heard about it, that there used to be down there when it was open, one would come one way and one would come the other, and they couldn't swap drugs. Is that now they're down there partying or taking drugs down there?
If you're gonna do that, do all the roads in Scott County. Y'all, y'all just speaking out Frayley Town, it ain't happening. Go see for yourself. That don't happen.
I'm just telling you what I...
I know. You're just saying what you've heard. But I'm just telling you, I live there, I know what goes on. If you wanna do something on the drugs and alcohol, shut down the bunker road. But you won't, because hoods aren't about that. If you wanna get in it, we'll get in it.
I don't want any. I'm not in the drug business. I'm just telling you what I think.
Everybody's wanting to say that now. The guy that lived there in the White House had an episode back about three or four years ago where the guy come in his house, if you remember, he was a lame fellow. But now that, you can't use that, keep using that, you know?
I don't even know the guy you're talking about, so I'm not using it at all.
Let's, let's save this discussion for the public expression on Frayley Town Road, if you don't mind, and keep your comments to the sheriff.
Like I said, I don't even know who that guy is or the White House or nothing.
I know, but...
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Is anybody for general public expression? Anybody else? Okay. We'll close general public expression, and there were a couple of things. What were you gonna say? I was gonna cover some things from the last meeting. That was, did you wanna cover something? I, I, the only request that we got through there that we can do anything about was Mr. Kevin Barnett's. I wanted to make sure that we addressed that, if we could today. He is asking for $1,000, it sounds like. Does the board have any opinions, thoughts on that? A motion? Or any...
I think a motion would give him $1,000.
I will say that if we do it for one, we need to do it for all. For all the food organizations? What other, I mean, besides Appalachian Harvest? I don't know that they're organized as much as this one is, but the Meals of Love in Nicholsville, they're once per week, they serve meals to homes.
But I would request if they come and ask.
Yes. But I'm just saying for future requests, if we do it for one.
It's noted.
Yeah. Meals for what? Meals of love. Meals of love, okay, not for love. Sorry.
I'll second that motion, Darrell.
Yes, for contingency.
Yes, for contingency.
From contingency, all right. We have a motion by Darrell and a second by Stephanie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries for that. Okay, I'd like to cover things from previous meetings that we didn't maybe give a solution for. Miss Tyce, you had asked about your road being on the six-year plan. It is on your schedule for about four years. So you are on the six-year plan projected to start in four years. Questions are being asked about Riverside Development. I do have some information on that that I can share. The daycare center, senior living center, workforce housing, this has been delayed. There has been a change in engineers, engineering firms on that project. There are meetings scheduled with EDA and those firms this month, so we should have something updated, I think, next month on that. I, I would just like to say, too, on that, not only is there a change of engineers, but the planning commission actually asked them to go back and change some of their plans on that to better suit workforce housing. So, you know, it's a little bit of our fault on that, or not our fault directly as the board, but county governments want for delaying that a little bit. The next item is another proposed possible project in the Weber City area. And there has been some delays due to family illness with that, and we should hear something more on that in August. You had asked about the funding for the rural roads. I think, Mr. Wilson, you're gonna cover your invitation. Right. You'll be covering that later in the meeting. So he has sent an invitation out to Senator Kilgore and Pillion, and he'll be covering that a little bit later. The VDOT, a couple of things there mentioned over in Hiltons area I was gonna cover later. But Mr. Senter did mention that the, with VDOT, ditching operations are underway on Boosie Creek and they're moving to AP Carter Highway next with the ditching. The Boomax, which covers the higher brush, operations are being conducted in May Stanley Town and also bus routes, so look, be in touch there. And I'll cover some more stuff under VDOT, but I just wanted to address your questions on that. Yeah, VDOT's been taking care of some ditches and road clearing, cutting back down Pat'sville as far as the Duffield office goes, so... All right, is there any additional items that we would want to take out of citizens' expression? All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. And first is the public hearing for, consider proposed road abandonment of a section of Route 624 Frayley Town from 0.67 miles east of Route 683 Purchase Ridge Road to 0.66 miles south of Route 621 Jalen Lane, a distance of 0.17 miles. And we will open the public hearing for that. If you would like to speak on, either way, on the Frayley Town Road, please come up and...
Good morning. I apologize for putting the wagon before the horse.
That's all right. We're glad we got it straightened out.
We got it straightened out.
Thank you.
First of all, I live in the Frayley Town community. I live right off of Highway 58. I have access down the valley, property down the valley along J Road Lane. I also own... I also own property across the north fork of the Houston River. I lived and I grew up along Highway 624, the Frehley Town Highway. I've spent many miles up and down that road. I understand the concern that people have about the road closing the bridge. There are issues they have with safety, they have issues with the dust, because part of the road is unpaved from Janon Lane down to where the road intersects with Highway 638. A few minutes before this meeting started, I received a call from Alan Sumter, who is from the Wise Virginia Department of Transportation. And he was giving me an update on what was going on this with the road. I have spoke with numerous people in the Frehley Town community and in the Duffield area. There's a big concern that people have that will, relating to closing this bridge. There's a safety concern, fire and EMS has a concern, because that road can be used as an alternate route to get to the Purchase Ridge area, to get to the Red Hill area, in case the road at Pattonville is blocked and prevents people that live off of 638 from accessing their property. Could we bring that map up? Could you point where 624 starts? Frehley Town Road? And where it intersects? Okay, it starts there. If you go down approximately 100 yards, the road is paved. That road, the width of it down through there, is approximately 16 to 18 feet wide. Now, we go over to where Blake Lawson lives, on the other side of his house. That road is very narrow. It's approximately 12 feet wide. I don't know what the state's right of way is down Frehley Town Road. I haven't been able to get an answer to that question. Alan Sumter told me a few minutes ago that the state had approved funding to replace that bridge. I just can't believe anyone would object to that bridge being replaced. From talking with the people, neighbors in the community, most of them did not realize that this abandonment of that section of the highway was the bridge. And they didn't know anything about this hearing. So, again, I drove across over to my property, and I own the area there that's in sort of pink and purple.
It's highlighted there.
It's highlighted there. That is 44 plus acres of property. My property runs all the way to the top of the ridge, which is about one mile. I own approximately three tenths of road frontage from my property line over to where my property line ends. Also, there's other people just on the south side of that bridge that were not aware that this hearing was being held today. So...
Mr. Williams, if you don't mind wrapping up your comments, your time's running out.
I will, we'll fast, okay?
Thank you.
In summary, I have a couple of recommendations. I recommend that the board members immediately recommend approval of the replacement of this bridge that goes across the north fork of the Clinch River. Also, I recommend that if it's a safety issue or criminal issue, that people live along that road, contact the sheriff's department. I also recommend that that road be paved from Janon Lane down to the other side of Blake Lawson's property and house. So, in closing, I hope that you will support the replacement of that bridge. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Does your property, John, Frehley Town Road?
Yes, I have property that's highlighted there.
Yes.
Which is approximately three tenths of a mile across that road.
That was down there a few months-
And that would create an issue for me in maintaining and developing that property if that bridge was taken out. Plus, it's a big safety issue, because if that road would be closed from 638, the only way law enforcement and EMS could get in there would be from Highway 604.
You are correct.
Any other questions? I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this morning.
Hey, Bill, can you put that map back on there and show me where Highway 104 is? Or 604, 604, I'm sorry.
Yes, 604.
604 is what, Rain Road?
604 goes from Duffield down to Pattonville.
Pattonville, yeah.
Pattonville.
We're talking about-
It's right here.
So that's how EMS, fire department, sheriff's department would have to go through?
That there's 58.
Right.
Down, and turn on Frehley Town.
Right, okay.
The alternate route is that you would have to go down a little further, and you're across Purchase Ridge Road?
Yeah, go back to Pattonville, State Shell.
Right.
Or they could go across, as someone said, they could go over to Fairview, but when you're talking about law enforcement, safety, you're talking about time. If EMS, safe law enforcement, had to access that area, they'd have to go to Pattonville, cross 638, and that's, you're looking at 10 miles.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll open it up to the rest of the public comments. Blake, you'd given me some stuff before, do you wanna come up and make your comments now? Okay.
Talk about that Frehley Town Road. It's high as a, by all means, down there. If you shut it down, something happens, we gotta go all the way around. EMS gotta go all the way around. If somebody's having a heart attack, what they gonna do with that? And it's all about bumping roads. It, it kinda works out, it needs a little attention, I mean. We've got decent men there. That Frehley Town Road takes care of them too. They can get to it in a whole lot of time. You can get through there, get Frehley Town, get Fairview, a whole lot of time. If something happens to them on the road, that's all for you. A caution road, something happened here, you can go on down either way and get to it. It just kinda breaks your heart pretty bad.
Right. John, when you first came up there, you forgot to state your name, where you're from, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's just, just the hands and roads, I mean, but that bridge needs to be fixed, okay? That road needs to be opened back up. And bumping needs to keep maintained, and keep that road open, I tell you on account. Them other people in there, something happened to them, that road get blocked on the other end, what they gonna do, how we gonna get to it? And another thing, they got a paved road on the other end of bumping there, and a cool bus can't go in there. What, what, what's the problem here? It went in there 60 years ago, okay? I rode the bus, I said, well, Eric wrote. Look how much it improved. Paved road, nothing here, from looking at the bus, I come up here before the cool shut down, I'm asking, why? Did anybody look into it?
Yeah, we talked to the school bus garage-
Okay.
And they said they didn't feel, their drivers didn't feel comfortable going through there. That's a driver issue, though.
You going in the drive and say, "I can't go on"? Hey, I rode the VDOT. I could tell and say, "I can't push that road, I can't take that road."
Right.
On account, you know, I'm afraid of it. They had to get it fixed, on account of other people had to get out of there, you see what I mean? Okay, then how them youngin' out there, if that road down so bad, go ahead and fix it. On account, hey, you putting them youngin' different too? If that bus driving so afraid, put somebody else to hold that bus. If she can't drive on a paved road, she can't drive down the full lane. I don't want my youngin' knowing, okay? If, if she that afraid and curious, she don't need to be attracted. And I don't see why they can't pave Frehley Town, I mean, you know, it paved everywhere there. And of course, been a sick year plan, but it's been 60 years and it still ain't got nothing. Well, we're paying that thing. And we'll, we'll, you'll pay tax, and amount of people in bumping need to get that bus running in there, on account. They don't cut the guys crap when that boy with the guy pay. When y'all send that, that sign out, pay your rent tax, you don't cut them out. That, that you'll pay rent tax. That you'll pay this and pay that. Them youngin' should entire them just like early young. And that bus should go up there. I'm gonna ask you something, all we cars sitting out here, I'm always big deal in the heat. Taxpaying paying for that, ain't?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The taxpaying paying for them bumping too, and that's the thing, ain't? Why we wanna need somebody else? Would, would you wanna, youngin', money like the bus, and have, have put guys in their vehicle and take them in and out every morning, every night? I just take money out of your pocket, so, and you have to pay anyway. Y'all, y'all think that's right? You think you want to take your daughters and too, and do this and do that? She, she should be entitled and just like the early young. I don't care what color she is, who she is, what kind of name she got, she should be just like the early young. No youngin' should be west there, they say, "Don't wait in there," okay? I wait a little, wait them youngin' out, when I know seven of them in there. If that road that bad, think.
Are you saying what I mean? John? John, you've run out of time for the comment, let's let a few other people comment, if you don't mind.
Well, well, we're them youngin' just like the early young, okay?
Thank you, John.
When y'all get out there, then?
You're right.
When we're going on the west shoe call, so, we'll give them 100 cents. We don't give you pieces, just call somebody else named after them. It don't matter who they is, sir. I'm gonna give that person 100 cents, I'm gonna try to, the best, my knowledge, if the good Lord will help me, okay? That's, that's the way we should be true rights all the way, okay? We can't get away from God, I'm gonna get help food you get.
John, you mind giving somebody else a chance to talk? We, we got you, we understand.
Well, let's look in on that, let's, let's see what, what I can do, I mean, you know, just... I'm my neighbor.
I understand.
You my neighbor, everybody my neighbor. When I go out there, hell, does feel far enough, maybe I don't go a whole lot. But when I do, I want my 100 cents be for them, okay? For you, this, I don't want to hold nothing back. Just like them, uh, uh, Eve and them go out there, they try to help people. I, that's part of the job, try to help people, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm not proud of them, boy, I'm not proud of the VDOT. They ain't shorthand, and never lie here, I know they can't get work done, but let's try to take bumping road to a little bit, on account, if they're getting them people in and out there. What she was have a heart attack and say the road blocked on the other end, on Frehley Town now. I know it's paved road, but it took it wrong. Have a little good feel, she take the heart back and die.
Yeah. John, John, can we get somebody else? Thank you, I appreciate it. We, we got you. Anyone else for public comment on the Frehley Town Road?
My name's Fred Stewart, I own some land on Frehley Town Road. I'm not a long-winded speaker, or a good speaker. I oppose the bridge being reopened. I'm sure you'll hear Blake has more information than I do. But there's, for a gravel road, I don't know if, I guess the state has a speed limit, but it's not posted, that I know of anywhere across there. And I have witnessed vehicles going across that bridge. And I don't have a video or anything, but if they didn't leave the road when they went across it, there wasn't much weight of the vehicle on the road, I mean, they about jumped it. And I've had them where they, my property, there's a 90-degree turn toward the, the north fork of the Clinch there. And they have come around, it's the fastest, they would skid out of the road into my hayfield. And there's another guy, he's, he's got a hayfield there, and not right where mine's at, but they've done doughnut circles in his hayfield. And when they blocked the bridge, they had sort of kind of, but let's say, he sat in there. I talked to a guy that was, I can't remember his name, but anyway, he, I called him and told him they was going in my hayfield to go around that blockade, across the bridge, and around the blockade on the other side, and going on across. He said, "Well, I figured that with the road blocked, they would recognize that sign." I said, "Well, you're not considering the people that run through there." And there's not a great deal, but trash, beer cans. It's not, all the people that go through there aren't undesirable, but there's some, bad apple spoils a whole bunch. And I would, I would rather see it closed, and there, I don't have the distance, but from each end of it, of Frehley Town Road, if you go around to Purchase Road, it's a- it's, eh, three mile or so, I don't have the exact distance. But, eh, as far as EMS going through there, they would make a whole lot more speed. They go on the paved two-lane road. I don't know what constitutes a two-lane road, but there's very few places in there where two cars can meet and pass. A lot of times, one car will have to back up to let the other one pass. And I would just prefer the bridge be closed, and that's my personal preference. Whatever you can do to help us, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I'd say, will you know?
Anyone else for public comment?
Um, let's cut to chase.
Don't forget to state your name and where you're from.
My name's Roger Stedham, I live in the Kingdom section, right beside Frailie Town Road. Let's just cut to chase. These fellows, and I ain't got nothing against none of them, they want that bridge shut, closed. They come in each way, nobody goes through, they don't have to eat dust. So that's, that slows all that down, but the rest of us lives on the same kind of road. I met a state truck this morning coming over here at a backup to a white spot. That's going up through the Kingdom, Bunker Road. You cannot take, even take a car over, and they keep beating over. Now, you can go drive it yourself, take you a four-wheel drive, I give you a heads-up notice. But here's the thing, and, and that's true, if you're going in ambulance and you're saving time, go down that paved. But if there's a wreck there and you can't get there, what's your next option? Go all the way up to Faragie? You know, you know what I'm saying, you gotta go all the way up that way. And of course, drugs and drinking's everywhere, it just ain't on Frailie Town Road. Y'all people see it, you know it, you know what I'm saying, it's everywhere. So let's just, and, and here's my thing, if you're gonna shut the road, shut it down at Purchase Ridge where it comes off the bit, shut it down where it comes off Duff Pattonville Highway and let the people that owns the land wants the bridge shut down, keep the road open. Don't just shut it where that bridge is at and work both ends. If you're gonna do it, do it out. I mean, it just makes sense, now, if you're gonna shut a road there. Because now, when Mike Carter was over the state and Chad Hood was the supervisor, I did call and complain to mine. He said, listen, he said, it is harder for me to shut a road down than it is for me to open it up. He said, once that road is established and it's on everybody's Google, maps, it's there. You know what I'm saying, so. Six, one way, half a dozen of them, you know?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stewart.
You go check Frailie Town Road, you might as well check, eh, twenty-three down there.
Yeah, all of them, if you're gonna do it over the road, let's just shut every road we got there, because it's terrible for you, it ain't just gonna have one certain road. And I understand Blake had an incident three or four years ago, I can't remember exactly in my head, but that wasn't because of roads, it was the guy who was walking either way. He wasn't driving down that road. I mean, if the road was closed, he could still come over there and done what he done.
Watch your hand.
Huh?
I said, watch your hand.
Anyone?
I've got one comment in reference to the crime in the community. I was a victim of a criminal act last year. There was four kids stole a car in Lee County, came across fifty-eight, ditched the car right near where I live, came up the valley, broke into my truck, slept into my truck that night. My wife and I went to Duff Field next day, I was going to take the truck, but we decided to take the car, and they were in the truck, sleeping or passed out. When we got back, I went into the basement, they had gone into my basement and stole stuff.
And, and another thing, I was just like.
Jenny, if you're gonna address the board, please come up to the podium, okay?
But, but, let's give everyone a chance to talk first. Is there anyone, sorry, Mr. Stedham, eh, is there anyone else here to, to comment on the Frailie Town Road Bridge abandonment?
Fair point, over here, I'm Blake Lawson, live on six-six-nine Frailie Town Road. No hard feelings, guys, everybody, everybody has what they have to say, so. Um, I affect everybody. But I'm here to formally express my strong opposition to reopening the bridge on Frailie Town Road. As a resident living directly on this road, I, I along with me and my neighbors, which I gave you the letters, just there. Strongly feel that keeping the bridge closed is a crucial safety and well-being of our community, especially for families and small children. Since the closure of the bridge, we have experienced a noticeable improvement in the safety, peace of mind, quality of life and road, and we no longer feel reckless, fear reckless driving, accidents, or other dangerous activities that have plagued our neighborhood for years. My family and I, along with others in the community, and that's on the Frailie Town Road, um, have lived with constant threats of speeding, drunk driving, and even criminal activities, such as drug-related issues, trespassing, vandalism. Closure of the bridge has significantly reduced all those problems. I understand that some may disagree with the closure, but I ask you to consider that those of us who live directly on this road are the ones who deal with consequences every day. For us, this is not just a short commute, occasional drive, it's our home. Many of the arguments I've heard in favor of reopening the bridge come from people who do not face the same risk we do, they do not live on this road, and they do not experience the dangers we face on a daily basis since we live there three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. My family, including my two-year-old daughter, doesn't shouldn't have to live with the constant fear of somebody running off the road and potentially hitting us since we live under the road. As someone who has lived on the road since two thousand and fourteen, I have seen firsthand the damage caused by reckless driving, from damaged vehicles torn up fields, and people doing donuts in the hayfields, and a constant litter that we were forced to clean up. I have been virtually impacted by break-in, which Mr. Stedham said, and had the whole person gunpoint while waiting for the police as with a drug-induced episode. It was my computer, my community, not those that was off the road, that came to my aid and helped repair the damages. It is important to stress that the safety of our community should not take precedence over convenience for those who merely pass through the area. The road has blind curves and is not conducive to fast traffic, especially when people would drive recklessly. For the sake of our children, families, peace of mind, we respectfully ask that the bridge remain closed. We believe that safety, peace, and well-being of the community should not be determined by those who don't, do not bear the direct consequences of their decisions. The safety of our community, particularly the safety of the small children, should always be a priority. I understand many of you, I understand many of you have grown up around here and know the area well, as I grew up around a lot of you that's on the opposing side. However, it is important to recognize that those of us who live directly on the road face daily challenges and dangers that others do not. People who do not reside here or live miles up the road should not have a say, that's my opinion, in what happens to our community. Decisions won't affect their daily lives in the same way it affects ours. Many live well off the road and on private drives, so they don't really understand what we see or go through. In closing, I'll ask you to consider this, if it were your family, your children, or your grandchildren facing the same dangers that we do every day, and you had a chance to change it, would you stand on the same side, would you stand on the side of opposition to keeping the bridge closed? Or would you, like many of us, prioritize the safety of your local ones above all else? For sacred community, peace of mind, children, well-being, I respectfully ask you to keep the bridge closed. The lives of our families should never be at risk for the sake of future convenience for those that live outside, and does not share our concerns. I also, it was on, we talked about the drug incidents, yes, because drugs everywhere is all over the roads, it doesn't matter where you go, any back road, but the bridge is closed. Now, we don't have all the through traffic, don't have to worry about that.
Close the neighborhood, I guess. Mr. Stedham, to chase, get right down, move there. The road was open when you moved in the house, the house was sitting there, so now you can't come back and say, well, I don't want the road open because I live beside the road.
Mr. Stedham, can we please be respectful of, of everyone?
Sorry, I know, but let's just.
I don't, I don't, I understand.
Anyways, that's what I had to say about it, usually the other letters there as well, that's from other people. And, um, when it came to doing all the other great drug-related incidences, I dealt directly with a detective, because that's what I was asked to do, me and him, we talked back and forth. And I was letting him know a lot of those things that went on. So, here's my letter.
You painted on that side that way, it just has to make more trees.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Let, let's see if there's anyone else that had, eh, that wishes to speak on this. A- anyone else that hasn't spoken already?
If I'm a feet person, I'll go sleep right there.
Good morning, I'm Larry Pearson, I live on the border between District Five and Six in the Nashville Tunnel, Duff Field Community. I was just there thinking, you know, roads bring people together, they should connect each other. And that certainly was for me, because the first time I remember on that road, I was about seven years old, and I was in the back of a fifty-four stepside Chevrolet pickup. We were going to visit relatives over in Purchase. I still drive the road, I don't go through anymore, obviously. Stop and get a good drink there, Frailie Spring. If anybody has a drink from the Frailie Spring, I recommend you stop and have one. Eh, also, the teacher that broke the paddle in the second grade and the fourth grade, June Delaney, miss, Mr. Michael.
Can they chip break one on you?
Eh, I need a lot of, I need a lot of, eh, taming down, I guess. But she also lived there, and we would go see the Delaney sisters. We would go through to see relatives on the Purchase Ridge. I think it's an asset to the county. I understand the landowners having an issue. Now, the issue is not with people that choose to drive in a, in a civilized manner. That, that doesn't affect. My grandfather, I doubt he was speeding with his, eh, his mules when he went through there years ago, too, so. I think that's an issue, just people speeding and reckless, it's just reckless individuals. I think that's an enforcement issue. Is there widening of the road, traffic corners? Might help. But I think it's an asset to the county in the long run. It's a wonderful drive, I take people from, friends out of town and relatives. I used to especially have relatives from Florida that sadly passed away, and I always loved to go down Frailie Town Road, stop at the Spring, get a cold drink, then we go on down and go down the Beeline. And sometimes we'd cross over, we'd go into the Purchase, sometimes we'd go down and cross Berry Town and back up. So it's a beautiful part of south, eh, southwest Scott Canyon. I'm advocating that we do rebuild the bridge, but we also give some consideration to these landowners who do out in concerns. Those are my concerns, too. Eh, it's, it's in, you know, I live there at Finckess Bridge. It's kind of quiet, we have issues there, too. It's a calm place, I think anywhere rural is gonna attract certain individuals looking to hide out for their nefarious reasons. So I'm gonna advocate that we do rebuild the bridge, and I'm not really certain, is this be a single-lane bridge that they're looking at, or a double? Two, if you want.
I think it's still gonna be a single-lane bridge, what I understand.
All right, well, that's what I have to say. I thank you for your time, y'all have a thankless job sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken have any comments? All right, I'll close public comments for this. Eh, discussion amongst the board members. Um, you all have been given the, the letters, the incident report, also heard from members of the community. Any discussion on, on this matter?
The sheriff was asked if he's aware of any issues on this road. He said he was not aware of any. I also went back in April of twenty-five and contacted the nine-one-one office, and I went over this at the April meeting. Eh, there was no history of drug-related calls to the nine-one-one system going back to twenty-twenty-one. And there's one arrest in twenty-three of an intoxicated female at the bridge. So it appears that there's no calls being asked for help. And based on what the sheriff said, he's not aware of any either. So I think it's more of a law enforcement issue than a bridge issue. And I think somebody else said that. So I think you need more law enforcement in the area. But I think you had some information on recommendations from EMS department.
Yeah, and I, I, kind of echoing what we kind of heard already, you know, with fire and EMS, I did reach out to, eh, you know, Duff Field, and they would, eh, you know, be opposed to closing the road just for the same reasons that we've heard. Um, delaying response to, you know, those calls. Also, you know, with the bus routes and stuff, um, you know, anytime you kind of close, you know, a road, it, it gets to be, eh, you know, tough to, it makes a big difference with the flow and everything that's going on, so. That's, I, I talked to Roger.
Yeah, eh, sorry, I should have mentioned this beforehand, too. I had a, a number of calls and, and texts, eh, all of them, eh, were, eh, or most of them, there might have been one that was for the closure, but most of them were against the closure. Eh, Kate Jesse, he lives, eh, up in that subdivision right above Frailie Town Road, he was against the closure because, eh, sometimes the rain floods the small bridge at the start of Frailie Town Road, and they have no other way to, eh, exit. There is a, eh, Mr. Mike Bowen, eh, that owns property on that road, that had texted me. And, eh, from his text message, he, eh, if we abandon the bridge, he wants to sue us, eh, for that, for damages, eh, for making his property harder to access. Eh, I'm just telling you what his text message said, and I showed it to Ms. Kegley. Eh, and then I had talked to Tim Edwards, who, who said he was, eh, you know, either or, but he had noticed that the traffic, the, eh, the traffic, the undesirable traffic, I guess you could call it, um, on that road still happened, but it just didn't go all the way through. Eh, that he had called the other day about some people being passed out beside the road. And never got a response, eh, down there, and then, you know, they woke up in a couple hours and drove off. But anyways, that is, that's the con, that's why people have contacted me, so. Just throwing that out there as well. Sorry, I did mention that.
And I would just again emphasize that the B-Dog is that bridge, you know, slated to be replaced, it's funded, um, they're in, been a previous board action, I believe, in support of that.
Anyone else have any comments? Eh, Danny, I think you said you had somebody call you about an incident?
Well, they said that they was, the way I took it, okay? They was some down there, I'll say, party or something, and said they called nine-one-one and said he'd been almost two hours for some, said they was busy, couldn't go check it, said it's almost two hours for they called back. And they was already gone by time they called back.
I think we talked to the same person, yeah. Anyone else? All right, so to kind of close out this issue, we need a vote, either way, is that correct? Ms. Kegley? So do I hear a motion to proceed with the rebuilding of the, eh, Frailie Town Road Bridge?
I'm gonna make that motion.
I have a motion to rebuild the bridge?
Rebuild that bridge.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Addington seconds. All in favor of, eh, rebuilding the Frailie Town Bridge? Eh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eh, motion carries, six to one. So we will recommend to B-Dog that they rebuild that bridge. All right, moving on.
Can, is, Sheriff Eadst still here?
Mr. Eadst, yeah.
Okay. Is it possible? Is it possible that like whenever you all go to Duffield, maybe you could just swing through there?
You'll come up to 753 through the Kingdom too, like in there.
We should be able to do that.
I think y'all done everywhere, you know that, Sheriff.
Yeah, we have to continuously say. Yep. If we had more people, we could do a lot more.
That is a problem throughout the county and everything.
When you got three people working a shift and one's off on vacation or sick, you down to two, that makes it hard to call it.
But yeah, I mean.
Especially the night shift, the night shift. The day shift we can handle.
And I understand why people do that, because they're leaving Duffield, I guess, or leaving the highway. And that's the first like country-looking, private-looking road that you got down through there. Of course, they're going to pull through, pull through there to kind of hide out. And so, yeah, maybe once the bridge is open, if you all want to mine for like a month or two, it doesn't have to be forever. Just really hit it hard.
We could do that. We have that list, you'll let them know, extra patrol in this area, this area, this area. So that's no problem. It's just timing may not be right for everybody, but we, they go through there during the night, you know, most people would not know they went through there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, just anything you could do to kind of help that, maybe, you know, let people, we'll, you know, inadvertently let people know that that's not a safe place to take and do business like that.
We, Major J.C. checked with dispatch on that also. And we, we had four calls so far this year, a DOA, a fire department call, suspicious activity, may or may not be drug-related, or may have been, what we're talking about, and check a vehicle. Another one gave to the state police, two subjects in an old sitting car in a driveway. This is vehicle, but that's, that was back in '73, probably the one you're talking about.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. All right. We'll close that public hearing out to recommend to VDOT that they rebuild the bridge. We're moving on to the next public hearing on the possible adoption of ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety, the erosion sediment and sediment control ordinances of Scott County, to add into the definition of farm structure in Section 10-2 and to add farm structure agreement in lieu of plan to the fee schedule. We'll open the public hearing for that. Does anyone have any comments on the erosion and sediment control ordinance? All right. Nobody has any comments, we'll close public expression. Board members, discussion on this?
I did have an opportunity to discuss this with Scott County Extinction Agent Scott Gerald, and he's in favor. He said he does support farmers.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to adopt and amend and reenact in its entirety the erosion and sediment control ordinance of Scott County?
So moved.
All right. I'll go Stephanie move, Jeter seconds. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Unfinished business. What have we got here? Anything?
I don't think so. I'll touch on a few things, but.
The, we've discussed the lawn mowers at the Jeep Park, is that going to be covered anywhere else?
I think there's a discussion in the board, yeah. That's in 13B, aye, or B1, I guess. All right. New business. David Rose from Davenport Company.
Good evening, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Rose, again pleased to be here, thank you. If you do not, I've got a hard copy of what I'm going to present, so I can hand that out. And I've got some for the audience, if so. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Wilson, if you want to say anything to start, I could just go right in, or whatever you'd like me to do.
Yeah, well, why don't you go ahead and then I'll kind of follow up a little bit. I will mention, I guess, that the school board met and heard Mr. Rose's presentation last night and voted unanimously to move forward, but just to think about that, but.
So you would turn to page one, little background of, I think many of you, if not all of you, seem to hear before. I'm David Rose, I'm a principal partner at Davenport Company out of Richmond. And we've had the good fortune of working with Scott County, probably for more than three decades. So no stranger to this great county, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Little background, John Ferguson contacted me as a follow-up to some discussions I had with your staff, oh, about a month or so ago, indicating that they, of course, were looking at having two bids with regard to, meaning two successful results on two separate projects, one for Yuma and the other for Weber City. That said, he asked if I would help him and with the approval of the school board and hopefully this board, move forward with funding to take care of those two bids. He had contacted me, we had worked with him, thanks to this board's approval, back in 2012, 2013, on some energy performance contracts, which worked out and ultimately the county's school board paid the debt off even faster than our schedule. So all good. So with that said, you can see there the two bids, those are the winning bids, I believe, and correct me, but one of the projects got three bids, I think one got four bids, so maybe five. But those are the two winning bids. We, of course, have no commentary on whether that's, those are good bids or what have you. We're simply told that we have roughly about $5.3 million that needs to be taken care of. But the other thing is, and this is very important for this particular board, the citizens, is that the school board has $400,000, give or take, already allocated out of their recurring budget to take care of this. So they will not be coming to this board for any financial assistance. That's important. I wanted to make sure that was clear. We've made sure that in looking at the numbers and looking at the cash flows, they indeed appear to be able to fund this project without having to come back to the county board for any assistance. So the reason we're here, of course, under Virginia law, is that you, of course, have to weigh in, have to make certain approvals, and depending upon how we borrow that money with your approval, may even need a public hearing to do that. And so again, this board, working with your county attorney, working with bond counsel as well as the attorney for the school board, was there last night. All of those parties will make sure that whatever we do is going to be according to the Virginia laws, like we've done before with you. So with all that said and done, we agreed that I would come in front of the two boards and talk about a plan of finance. So if you go to page two, what we're going to do with your blessing is the same thing we did years ago in the energy performance approach. We're going to dual-track that. And what we mean by that is, we're going to both put out a request for bid for a direct bank loan, at the same time, we're going to apply to the state for the Virginia Public School Authority that does their financings twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. That said, though, when they do their financing in the fall, they need a resolution of this board, they have to have that, they have to have a public hearing. And so we put together a schedule. But the bottom line is, either way we go, if we move forward, it would be done, we believe, by the end of October. And that appeared to work for the folks over at the school board in terms of their bid and what have you. So on page three, what we would like to do is to send out this request to the banks immediately and get the results back by the end of August. We have August 28th, you'll see that on the next page. There is a county board, as I understand it, on the 3rd of September, and then there's the school board on the 4th of September. So unlike yesterday where the times were flipped, this is a little bit different. But the hope is, again, no guarantee, the hope is, is that we will get some good results from the direct bank loans. If we do, then we may very indeed recommend, working with Josh, working with John and his people, that we pursue the direct bank loan. The school board understands that it's possible, if not probable, that if we do the direct bank loan, we'll need some form of collateral. Those schools are more than ample to be the collateral. And we've worked through VA Corp. and the insurance, so that's not a problem. That doesn't impact you, the county board, but it is the schools, and they seem to understand that. If we go through the state program, it is the full faith and credit of the county, there is no collateral, other than, of course, the county saying we will make those payments if ever there's a shortfall. And that's the way that program has always worked. So then lastly there, the Economic Development Authority, if we go through the direct bank loan, we will need to work with John Kilgore, as we've been the past. That's a legal conduit. If we do the VPSA, we do not use the EDA. Not any extra expense, that's not the issue, it's just the way the structure works. And we've, we've gone both ways with y'all over the years that I've been involved. So neither one gives us any concern, I think, you know, I think the county attorney would agree as well. It's whatever makes the most sense, and we'll see. So with this dual-track approach, on the page four, I put together the schedules side by side. I've also talked to Sands Anderson, which is again, your bond counsel. That's the longstanding opinion that is necessary to make sure that everything is done. Our goal here is to do this on what we call a tax-exempt basis. I tell people, for those in the audience, as well as you, that if we're able to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, and we think we will be, the interest rates will be lower than we as individuals could borrow if we have a mortgage. That's considered a taxable borrowing, more traditional. If we can do a tax exempt, it's a rare opportunity, local governments, not-for-profits are able to borrow on a tax exempt basis. And that's how we've done a lot of your financings before, not necessarily all of them, but if we can, and those rates are quite favorable. My hope is, is that we would get an interest rate that would be, I don't want to say publicly for purposes of banks and all, but I think, again, we hope to get something very competitive and put them into competition. And that's always worked for us here at the county and other places. All that being said, if we don't get a bid, and we don't get a bid that we like from the banks, then we would move to the VPSA. Ultimately, if markets don't look good, and we can always back out of the VPSA, hopefully not, there is talk, there's a sense that rates are going to be moving downward over time. Usually when that happens, I will tell you, the markets build that in ahead of time. A lot of people say to me, well, they go, you know, drop the rate for Fed next Tuesday, so to speak. Should it drop on Wednesday? Usually it's already done, sort of baked in the cake. So I feel like for the moment, again, you know, knock on wood, the markets are good. We hope it stays that way. But ultimately, even with the county and the school board saying, go for all this, if you do, if things go bad, we already have the ability to pull it back. So we just want to make sure everybody realizes that. With that, that's really all I have. We may ask through, through the county administrator that he puts in certain advertisements for the public hearing. We'll recommend that public hearing, probably at its size, to be a little bit of bond math and what have you, probably a little bit up to $6 million is what we'll do, but we can work through the exact amounts of that. The thought here is, again, it may just be a good precaution. We may also find that bond counsel says we may be able to do a public hearing later in September or beginning of October. But nevertheless, I want to make sure you knew, that's probably part of the process, certainly if we go through VPSA. Direct bank loan may or may not be. Sometimes bond counsel feels if you go through the EDA, you don't need a public hearing. Others may feel otherwise. I'm indifferent. I look to both Sally and the folks over at Sands Anderson. So with that, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions. So appreciate it. Good to be here.
Any questions from the board, or, sorry. So from us today, you would need a motion in support of this?
I'd like a motion in support of this. Ultimately, we probably, again, it's going to be bond counsel, will tell you what formal actions are necessary on the 3rd, if, whatever, maybe it's the following month, but I'm hopeful it's the 3rd, if we can get things rolling.
Let's just move forward with our FPA. Any discussion amongst the board members?
I do have some comments. I know today your purpose is financial feasibility of the project. But I'll take you back a couple of years when this delegation was in Richmond for the General Assembly, and we met in your office. And as I recall, the first topic you brought up is the feasibility, or not the feasibility, the eight to 10-year timeline on the feasibility of continuing our school properties due to their aging condition. The two schools that we're talking about, Yuma's 50 years old, Weber City is 70. Are you suggesting, and I know you're here for a different reason, but are you suggesting we put more money into aging schools? Your recommendation at that time was consolidation, and I think you were, the General Assembly was considering a locality sales tax. Could you comment on that?
Absolutely, Mr. Keen, thank you. And I appreciate you coming to our offices. We really enjoy when folks do that, and hopefully we'll do it again come this January, I'll be here before we know it. Just a little, just a small little clarification. We, as non-engineers, don't make any recommendations as to whether or not schools should consolidate. No different than when I worked for years on the Wise County consolidations, down from the five schools down to three. As they will tell you, we did not comment on whether or not they should go from five to three. It may make sense to us, but that's not our expertise. That said, however, if at the time, and you've got a good memory better than mine about that, if we're able to demonstrate that financially, there could be some cost savings and benefits, we certainly would concur with that. So for us, though, here in this moment, and I'll get to the 1% in a minute, for us in this moment, we were just provided with, this is what the school board is planning to do, and we weren't asked to our opinion whether or not it made sense. It was said to us to do this relative improvements, each about $2.5 million, rounding off, this was going to be helpful to continue the useful life of those schools. So I can't really speak to whether or not that's the best use of the dollars, y'all know better than I do. The second point, though, 1%, make sure everybody knows this, maybe not, and for the audience. Over the last two years, the legislature, in a true rare bipartisan position, has overwhelmingly approved allowing local governments to go to referendum in their respective local government and have a up to, up to 1% sales tax. And that sales tax, if it were approved by your citizens, would be for one thing and one thing only, and that is for school construction. Doesn't go for prior debt service, can't go for operations, salaries of anything, retirement, nothing, just to take care of school construction. It allows for both pay-as-you-go and borrowing for that, and it doesn't have a sunset. It allows it for 30, 35 years, as long as debt is outstanding, that 1% or up to 1% can be there. That's a serious number that could happen. So here's what happened, y'all know maybe. The last two years, it got passed, and Governor Youngkin decided that he would veto that. It appears that either the new governors to be possibly will be a little more favorable towards that, that 1%. What has happened previously is nine individual local governments, I think it was seven or eight counties, most of our clients, and the city of Danville, there may be one other city there, all went to the legislature. The last two years, it got passed, and Governor Youngkin decided that he would veto that. It appears that either the new governors to be possibly will be a little more favorable towards that, that 1%. What has happened previously is nine individual local governments, I think it was seven or eight counties, most of our clients, and the city of Danville, there may be one other city there, all went to the legislature over the last roughly decade, and on an individual basis, asked to be allowed to have a referendum. This legislation that was defeated was just to say statewide, everybody can ask, and they have the referendum. So right now, if you wanted to do that, Mr. Skeen, it would have to be a formal request of your county into the legislature at some subsequent, you know, subsequent legislative, you know, year. I think the hope is, is that it'll finally pass next year, this coming year. So that said, you could hold a referendum fairly quickly thereafter. I'm not an expert on the timing and what is required, but I know a lot of folks are thinking about, if it does pass, the hope is they could do a referendum, let's say, next November, and then obviously they're good to go. I will tell you, it's interesting, of the nine, all nine passed, and of the nine, it was not, maybe you think of being northern Virginia, big cities or big counties, it's actually not. It was really mostly communities all the way on the eastern shore, all the way out west on 58, pretty much on the Route 58 belt. So a lot of our clients, like Henry County and Halifax County, Danville, Pennsylvania County, those folks all passed it. So they're just wherever it's worth, and that's been a good thing for all of them. So I don't know if that answers your question, but there's been a sense that particularly the sales tax is, a lot of folks would be paying the sales tax, and they're not necessarily residents of that particular local government, and that's been, I think, the theory versus just the real estate, which is everybody that's here, so.
Mr. Castile, thank you. Mr. Castile and I had an opportunity to visit each of these schools this week, and I think our opinion needs to be for himself. Weber, Yuma definitely needs help. My only concern is, are we putting money somewhere that in a few years later, we're going to not have that school? And a third, I don't know if you're aware of this, but a third of the students that both Yuma and Elementary are from Tennessee, and they do not pay tuition.
I am, we've over the years known about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So for those reasons, I think, obviously, Yuma needs help, but did we put money in, and then a few years later, no longer have the school? And that's my concern.
And I just want to reiterate that the school division has the funds to move forward with this. They're not coming to the board for asking for extra funds. So as far as, you know, new tax dollars or anything, that's not what we're looking at here. It's more of, you know, coming to the board as a, yeah, as a support or a formality to move forward with the RFP is what we're looking at.
I personally think it's a wonderful idea. I'm an alumni of Weber City Elementary. I have watched the growth of that school, and it just warms my heart to see the school the way it is. And Yuma also, whenever I got married, I moved to Yuma. I lived behind the school. So, I mean, it, it just warms my heart just to see these schools thriving and everything, and I, I support it wholeheartedly.
Yeah, and I would also remind the board that it's our, our responsibility doesn't lie with deciding which schools need to get built or not. That is, that lies with the school.
It's the school board.
We'll try our best to finance or work on what they need, but, you know, at a certain point, we have to trust them, and if they believe they can get extra lockout of, out of these schools and provide better services to the children there, you know, I think that's something that they have decided that they can do, and it's just up to us to say, you know, whether we want to support them in that pursuit.
I'd like to ask you a question there, David Rosen.
Yes, sir.
When we was in Richmond there, me two years, first year, we was talking there, and you said that in the next 10 years, we definitely, Mr. Rosen, build some new schools. Said we had oldest schools in the state of Virginia. And I've kind of heard about everybody's opinion except Mr. Brickley's and Jeter's are. Mr. Skeen's, like he said, we did go to Yuma, and I can definitely see that it does need But the deal is, or we're wasting our money and building more onto schools that's 50 to 70 years old, in the next 10 years, that we're going to have to take and build new schools and solidate schools or whatever. And Mr. Skeen's there, he's got, had the numbers. One of the schools has got like 34%, and one of the schools has got 31% of Tennessee students. One of the principals said they had checked, and some of their grandparents and some, maybe it's been a divorce, and one lives in Tennessee and one lives in Virginia, and said that they had checked, and the school board had checked on stuff like that. Well, God.
Let me say this, Mr. Castile. Yeah, I think when you come to Richmond, there's a variety of meetings you have. I certainly would not know that you have the oldest schools, if you do, in the state. That's, that's definitely beyond.
Well, you said that.
If I said that, someone, you all gave that to me, or so, I would not. Now, I know schools that are 100 years old that we work with in other places, but again, my view on all this is, that's, that's really not my world, except to say, and I remember the meeting too, absolutely, to say that if you've got schools that are that old inevitably, there's going to be renovation, which we see. We do see 100-year-old schools get renovated. They've been kept up very nicely. But the same time, we also see like in Wise County, the consolidation, we see that as well as new, brand-new schools. I, I think the way I look at it is very simple. I know a lot, I believe, about your overall finances as a county. I've seen them get better. I've seen them be responsible. I've been here, or you gotta say here, meaning you've been with me, or some of you've been with me, when we talked about the county needing to get their fund balance up. You may recall that, and I told you that, and you did that. So you've moved that up, and we, that we presented that to the regional jail authority last week. I was here as well, and we showed how, you're right, a very solid unassigned fund balance, as we call it. That wasn't the case a few years ago, and so I appreciate y'all listening to us. I think here, the way I look at this, I don't make an opinion on whether Yuma or whoever is using the money wisely. I think, I just look to the school board to know that they know the schools best, they know for the short run, those relative dollars to roughly $2.5 million each. I saw it, in fact, they had the schematic up yesterday, as I was leaving, up on the board, you know, as I was leaving the meeting, and I made, made a point to look at that. That looks, and it makes sense to me what they're doing, but then again, I'm talking about that as an outsider, not as a professional. From a financial perspective, to your administrator's point, the fact that they're not asking you for any dollars, I take comfort in that. I also take comfort in the fact that they actually allocated roughly that $400,000 starting in this fiscal year, that just got started literally 35, 40 days ago. So I feel like they've been responsible on the financial end, that's really my world, and so if they've been responsible in the financial world, I'm here to say, we'd like to get you to, to let them move forward, and that's really all. But as for knowing your school's the oldest, I certainly, that was not my original knowledge, I'll, I'll tell you that, but, so we'll make sure of that.
Mr. Rosen, Mr. Manus, if I could take a minute. I agree with both of you, first of all, Mr. Manus. The county voters and taxpayers voted for the school board to run our schools, and they appointed Mr. Ferguson as superintendent to run those schools. And our only position here is to whether we back that, if we will financially back it. We, we're not here to determine what we build or when we build it. The only thing that I would suggest is that we do have a public hearing, whether it be VPSA or direct banking, and I think that'll be determined later, but I think we need a, we need a public hearing.
And to your point, Mr. Brickley, that's why, again, a lot of bond councils want to have a public hearing, no matter what, so citizens can come and, and provide their input on that, good, bad, or indifferent. So I personally like that idea. I, I think it's a healthy.
Will that be up to us to decide?
What's that?
Will that be up to the board here to decide?
It would. I, I think so. Don't you think, Sally, that they could, they want to make sure with public hearing there's nothing that precludes that?
No. And if I may, today, just step one. I mean, just to get it up off the ground, and as Mr. Rose said, it doesn't lock the school division or the county into anything. This is just to prove that RFP, and yes, the public hearings would be at a later date, you know, to be said.
Well, I will make the motion.
And I'm going to second it.
That we approve, yes, to keep this moving.
I've got a question first.
Okay.
Are you planning on doing both of these projects at one time, John, or are you going to...
That is, oh, excuse me. Yes, sir.
Go do it.
That's why, that's why we were asking Mr. Rosen, Shale, to get to establish or procure the necessary funding, like to do both of the things, if possible.
What about the federal money that comes down to the schools? Is that in the motion of getting done away with?
We did make application to receive additional assistance. I have yet to hear any results from the, from the state.
I didn't know where, if federal money was cut out, if that would hinder y'all's being able to pay this back or not.
We, we do not receive any federal money for school construction.
But you, you all did apply for a grant, and you haven't heard anything back?
We did apply for a grant in hopes of getting back a certain percentage of what is paid down on these, on these two, on these particular projects, but we have not heard anything back.
And that won't materially affect the amount that you all have to finance, right?
No, sir.
Okay. So it's a, it's a rebate, basically.
And I would point out, as, as, as John would say, if we were fortunate to get some material dollars that we didn't expect, then we could pay down some of that debt. It would not be a negative, it'd be a great positive. I'd be delighted to have that happen.
All right, there's still a motion standing on the floor to approve this.
Yes.
Motion by Stephanie and seconded by Shale. All in favor? Signing up by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And I will add a comment. I like Mr. Brickley's.
Just one no, or?
I'll say no, two aye.
Two, two ayes.
I don't know enough about it at the time, I guess so.
I would like to follow up Mr. Brickley's recommendation. In favor of that, I think that needs to be discussed.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think having it out in, in the public eye is better. So y'all have the approval to proceed, and we appreciate your work on this.
Thank y'all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skeen.
All right, let's, let's take a little recess for about 10 or 15 minutes, and we'll reconvene at 11:00. All right. Stretch your hands. Every stretch of the night. I love this.
I appreciate you coming and I kind of put in my memo to the board, hopefully you had a chance to look at it. The performance contract kind of comes around every, is it every year or two years?
It's a perennial contract, but they make changes every year, so we'll think annually.
Okay, yeah, and it's pretty routine, but she was kind enough to offer to come and be available for questions or anything. I know that the documents in the packet, I don't know if you had a chance to look at all 450-some pages of it, but I guess any questions for, if you have something to say.
I will say that it's, there's not many changes in the, in the performance contract from last year. There's just some redefining, some codes around federal grants and some changes they've made at the state level, so.
All right.
Do I have questions?
Do we need to approve this, or is this just purely informational?
It's, no, we'll need a resolution.
Has everyone had a chance to look over it? Has anyone got any questions?
And I know it's very much in draft four, which you all saw, so when it is approved and I get a clean copy, I will send that back out to Mr. Wilson from law.
Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Ms. Junior makes the motion, definitely approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I don't wish to care. You think so much?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lana Mullins.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
It's still morning, huh?
It's still morning, yes, we still have 55 minutes. Good morning. I'm Lana Mullins, I'm the Director of Scott County Department of Social Services, most of you guys know me. I'm here today to talk about two issues. First, a request for an ordinance for a bonus, and secondly, the PIP program. The good news is I'm asking for no additional funding today, so get that out of the way before I start talking. Always a plus, isn't it? So first off, the ordinance, the General Assembly approved this past year for local departments of social services to be included in the 1.5% bonus, which was, which was provided to state employees. This is something new for the Department of Social Services. I've been with the department for 34 years, and we've never had this opportunity before. DSS employees, we're, we're kind of in between county employees and state employees. We are county employees, but we are state-supported, other than the 15% county match. But when the state receives bonuses, the state-supported employees do not. So over the last few years, we've experienced statewide a lot of retention issues with staff due to just workloads, the complexity of the work, the safety issues that continue to develop. So we've done a lot of advocating, and this year the General Assembly did include local DSS employees in their state bonus. However, in order for us to provide that, even though they provided the funding, we do have to have a county ordinance, because that is, you know, it's part of the code. Any local government official, it's required to have a county ordinance. Now, one other issue with the bonus is our State Commissioner, Mr. James Williams, has also proposed a performance bonus to benefit workers that perform at a high percentage rate on Medicaid renewals. And kind of the backstory on this is Medicaid unwinding, and I'm not, I don't know if you're familiar with Medicaid unwinding, but basically during COVID, there were no Medicaid reviews. So across the state, if you were receiving Medicaid, there were no reviews on that during the public health emergency. So this lasted for several years, about three years, and then once that was over, all those renewals had to be completed. So there was hundreds of thousands of those across the state. We still have 80,000 statewide, those Medicaid renewals out there, and that's at a cost to the state of about $50 million. Because if you're on Medicaid and you're not continuing to be eligible, the state is still paying those fees. So to say all that is that he is proposing a performance bonus to Medicaid staff that are processing those in a timely manner. There's been lots of strategies to try and get these numbers down. It basically equates to we have outdated technology and the work demands outweigh the workforce. So this is just an idea that he has, he has proposed. However, even if that were provided from the state directly to the employee, we could not do that without an ordinance as well. So Ms. Kegley and I have worked together on the proposed ordinance, and we have put both of those factors in there. So I'm here today to ask for your support for that to begin the process, the public hearing and all the things that follow. I have a copy of that ordinance, do you guys, do you guys have that in your packets?
Yes.
Okay. So any questions on that?
Just to clarify, we're only approving the use of state funds for those bonuses?
It is, it is in our existing budget, yes, yes, that was presented, and the state funds, actually the state has provided $31,392 for us to implement this, and we've actually calculated it, and we only require $30,522. So they have actually provided a little more than, than we're going to need. Of course, that, that could be on when they did those calculations and the stack we have now, so lots of things factor into that.
Understood.
There are other employees that are getting the bonus that the county pays that would need this ordinance as well, like the county-funded deputy and 911 workers, but I think all that's figured into the budget.
Yes, all that was figured into the budget. All right, do I have a motion to accept this ordinance as it was provided?
No, no, you need to have a public hearing in September, so you need to authorize advertising for the public.
I accept. I need a motion to authorize the advertising of the public hearing for this ordinance to provide 1.5% bonus for full-time employees.
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All in favor, but by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have a public hearing in September. All right.
Okay, so now I had a, had a request to present on the PIP program. So the PIP program, if you're not aware of what that stands for, that is a Percentage of Income Payment Program, and it is in regards to utility bills. So this is a result of the Virginia Clean Economy Act, and it was developed to offer low-income households the opportunity to have their electric bills based on a percentage of their income. So this is per code, and it is only applicable to Phase 1 utility companies, which is Appalachian Power, and Phase 2, which is Dominion Energy. So basically for our area, you would have to be an Appalachian Power customer. So the PIP is funded, it is not a government-assistant program. It is actually funded through the utility companies, and if you look on your bill, you will actually see a fee that is called a universal service fee, and that is how the PIP is funded. Those funds all go together, and the power company funds that. So how it works is basically eligibility is determined by the local Department of Social Services. We take those applications. However, the enrollment or the disenrollment is through the utility company. So our role is only the eligibility determination. So keep in mind, I am presenting this from the DSS perspective, not the utility company perspective. But it does help income-challenged customer manage their electric bills year-round. So the monthly bill amount is basically based on a percentage of your household income and the type of heat source you have. So if you have electric heat, it is, make sure I get this right, if you have electric heat, it is 10%, or if you have another heat source, it's 6% of your monthly income. So for example, and this is based on the federal poverty scale, so for eligibility, we look at 150% of the federal poverty scale. So just to give you an example, for a family of four, your monthly income would have to be under $48,225. And this is not, you have to evaluate like all the factors, because this is not a program that's good for everybody. It doesn't always work out mathematically. So for a family of four with that income, if it was 6% of your income, it would be $241 a month is what you would pay on your power bill. If it's 10%, it would be $402 per month. So just for that particular example, if your power bill normally was not over $400 a month, then it would not mathematically, you know, work out that it would, you know, that it would make the most sense. Now also with this program, over a 12-month period, you have to make those power bill payments timely. They have to be on time and in full for 12 consecutive months in order for the remainder of your bill to be eliminated. So basically each month, you would have what the actual electric bill was, but you would only make your PIP payment. Then at the end of 12 months, if you've made all of those payments on time and all in full, then the balance would be waived. But if you do not make a payment on time or in full, then it goes back, and it's not 12 consecutive months, does that make sense? So that, that's, that's the process for that. It is not an unlimited fund. At any point in time, those funds could be depleted, and if so, those households would be notified, and at that point in time, they would become responsible for the entire deal. So questions about that?
Could you give us some examples? Well, how many people you have signed up already, households signed up already?
You know, I didn't bring those exact numbers, but I'm thinking that we had maybe about 300 households.
Do you have an idea about how many would qualify that this could benefit in the county?
No, I do not, I do not, because it's, it's more than just an eligibility determination. It's determining if that program is actually mathematically, you know, more financially feasible for each household. So no, it would be difficult to estimate that.
The 300 people, households you have signed up now, do you have an average of what their monthly electric bill is under this?
We do not, because our only role is just to determine the eligibility, and then that goes on to the, the utility company.
I think it's a good benefit for seniors, and I think there, we probably have a lot more people in the county that would qualify and benefit from this.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question, though, and, and just to reiterate, so this makes sense. You pay on the PIP amount, 12 months, but if you happen to miss any of those, you're subject to the full balance?
You're subject to the full balance, or your 12 months starts over.
Okay.
And a lot of those decisions, whether you're, you can be disenrolled from the program, but that is up to the utility company.
That just seems, you know, if you have one emergency, you might have to start over, I don't know. That doesn't sit well with me, but I understand that there has to be a line somewheres.
Yes.
So the people that think they might qualify, what, how do they approach you or your administration?
Yes, if you wish to apply, they need to come, they can come personally to the local Department of Social Services, or they can apply online at Common Health. And it's a very simple eligibility process, basically, proof of income and social security numbers.
Common Health?
Common Health, yes, Common Health. That's an online program that you can apply for any public assistance program.
Is it kind of like an aggregator? Does it have all of the programs, or is it just for?
Yeah, you can apply for TANF, Medicaid, the PIP.
Oh, that's neat, okay.
Yes.
So it is like an aggregator?
Yes.
Something a little different from your program that I read, I think in Kingsport Times. The General Assembly is considering or have approved refinancing possibly the AEP debt. And if that happens, and it passes another governmental agency approval, then there could be a 15% reduction in electric bills starting first, I think next year at some point. I don't know if you've heard that, but that's different than what you're talking about, but there's some better things coming if they can refinance their debt.
I'd be wary about trusting them to actually give you the full 15% discount there, but that would be nice, would be nice.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, anytime. Thank you guys for your support.
We appreciate y'all.
All right, Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Tammy Tealer herself.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you doing?
I'm good, and we will get even better, right, we're going forward. I'm here for the timeline of the general reassessment. We need to make a motion or a decision to make a motion. Code 58.1-3252 for the county, it reads, "There shall be a general reassessment of real estate every four years, or if determined by majority vote of the county's Board of Supervisors every three years." If you make this, make this vote, any county that has a total population of 50,000 or less may elect by majority vote of its Board of Supervisors to conduct a general reassessment at either five-year or six-year intervals. So in the past, we've been doing six years. We have 21,433 people in Scott County, so we can definitely extend that if you guys choose to do so.
When was our last reassessment?
It went into a bag 2022. It felt like it took two years to get it completed and finalized, all through what we had to deal with, but.
So that reassessment was completed in 2021 and then went into effect in 2025?
The groundwork was done by the reassessors in 2021, and it's booked on January 1st, 2022.
Is, are there any advantages besides cost to the county?
If you done it less than six years, is that your question?
Well, I mean, either way, are there advantages either way?
The pain wouldn't be so bad, I think, with the taxpayers, if you did it less. It's gonna cost, whether you do it four years or six years, the cost is gonna be.
I think there would be a savings for six years. Every third term, did you have a free one, basically?
Yeah, but then you have a large shock every six years. If you imagine the last one, if the last reassessment was done in 2021, the previous reassessment was done in 2015. Then you think about how much inflation we saw between 2015 and 2021, that's a.
It's a lot of sugar shock.
I think the shock is led rather than, I know when people get excited about.
The six-year shock is last time.
Because we haven't had an increase in what, in, I don't know, how many years?
Eight.
Even though the barriers went up, but.
Six years.
Six years, wasn't it?
We've not raised taxes. Matter of fact, we lowered taxes one year.
That was in 2022, wasn't it?
I think so, the year of the assessment, we lowered it.
You lowered it for 22.
Is there any advantage from your viewpoint of doing it either way, besides a sticker shock?
Well, it's just staying complacent with the fair market value throughout, but I mean, they've looked at, in the past, they looked at doing in-house, they thought the cost upfront on that would be hurtful for the county.
How?
I kiddingly said, I think we should do it every four years myself. We can't do it now. We're at too, we're too far along for the fourth year, we're too far along.
So what you're saying is we would have to pass this, six years this time?
Yeah. The town that had the discussion.
I mean, if you did five, it would be pushing to, there's so many things that has to be done. You have to take bids, you have to decide who's gonna get the job.
So there really no.
You do have to have certified appraisers, assessors to come in and do this job, hired outside of the county.
Got you. So what you two are saying is there's no decision to be made here, it's just rough.
I'm just basically keeping us in compliance with the code by bringing it up.
All right. All right, so the request to extend it for two years? Do I have a motion for that?
Some move.
I have a second?
Same.
All right, all right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Stephanie motioned, and Jeter second. Sorry.
Well, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, building permit refund.
The refund request, I think, is in everybody's packet. It was basically a gentleman had planned on building a home on property and paid, I believe, for the building permit. Ran into some difficulties, decided not to build the home, I think went to maybe a manufactured home route. Did get a permit for that, that's paid for, permit's approved, so it's just that previous amount that he had paid that's the refund request is.
Okay, and this is just whether or not we're gonna refund him for that?
Right.
Why did that, why did that come all the way to the board? Could that have been handled at a lower level?
I guess I'm not 100% sure if that needed the board approval or what, that it needs board approval.
In every, in every instance, couldn't we empower?
It doesn't happen that often.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I assume it didn't, but.
It does seem like it minded them out to really bring them forward.
What you're, what you're saying, Mr. Tammy Tealer, make it for future, just say handle it locally.
Yeah, if we, if we can handle it within that.
Under a certain amount?
Yeah. You think we could do that? What was the full amount on this one? It was 87. What do you guys think? 200 bucks? If it's under 200 bucks, you can handle it, and do we?
Make two motions.
Okay, all right, first motion to approve the refund.
I'll make the motion to refund.
All right, Michelle makes the motion to refund, Danny Castile's second, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and the second motion would be any amount, are we authorized, or how would we phrase it? Authorize the building official to refund?
Present it to the county administrator, to the county administrator.
Okay, yeah, present it to the county administrator, and county administrator can approve refunds up to $200. All right, do I have a motion to that thing?
Some move.
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to opioid settlement.
I believe it's more of a, I guess Kegley can touch on that a little bit, as far as just entering into like a new.
A new settlement?
New settlement, right. I kind of put in my memo what we were looking for with this. It would be approve yes on the Purdue Plan, to approve signing the release agreement, and then participation in new settlements with nine additional defendants. And I will just touch on, I've kind of been trying to get up to speed on the opioid settlement stuff, and kind of got a timeline on things that we need to get done to start spending some of that and to benefit the county, so work's being done. So yeah, any money that we can get flowing through that can make a difference, I think.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'm glad you're working on that, because that's the issue. We've got, what is it, around $300,000 locked away, that we haven't been able to do anything with yet. But, all right, so do I need a separate motion for each of these?
I would.
Okay, all right, I need a motion to approve voting yes on the Purdue Plan?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second motion is, I need a motion to approve the signing of the GESA release agreement. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One thing on the opioid, opioid, a couple.
Hold on, we got one more.
I'm sorry.
Final, final one, approve participation, I need a motion to approve participation in new settlements with nine additional opioid defendants. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Michelle makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I brought to Ms. Kegley's attention in the past year a couple of instances when we wrote a list of time expiration to apply for opioid settlements, and I can't recall the details. Ms. Kegley, can you address that? I just know we, I brought your attention a couple times, take a look at this, write on my list, we haven't filed a claim yet?
Yeah, I think whenever you brought it up, the timeframe that already passed to do it, I'm not sure why it wasn't done, if it wasn't, but I can't, I can't speak to it. Sorry, county administrator, previous county administrator.
But that's something to think about, now that you're focusing on it a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, and too, you know, we haven't really had an outlet for this money, so, you know, getting the money's all well and good, but we need to be able to spend it to make a difference for the citizens, so.
Correct.
All right, moving on to federal grant administration policy.
Yeah, I think this kind of comes from the auditors recommending that we adopt the guidelines for the administration of federal grants, and I think everybody has a draft policy in their packets, so. I don't know if there was any questions on that.
Any questions or discussions?
And I guess do we need a motion to pass that?
All right, a motion to approve this federal grant, grant administration policy.
Some move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Stephanie moves, Michelle seconds, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion. Letter of support.
Yeah, that sample letters in your packets that I had received, we had, we've historically supported EMS council. I did note that Roger Carter served on the board on that organization. It seems like, you know, regionally, they do a lot of good work for us, and this is just coming up. They had to do a little bit of restructuring, so they just needed a new letter of support from us.
I'll make that motion that we send a letter of support.
I'll second that. All right, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, look, keep an eye.
Please accept DCJS Operation Ceasefire Forensic Analytical Technology Grant with a total award amount of $57,195, and establish the following expense codes for office, I mean, police supplies and equipment additions, and accept Virginia 911 Services Board, FY26 NG 911 Additional Funding PSAP Grant with a total award amount of $150,000, and establish the following budget codes: expenses for office supplies, supplies other, furniture, and fixture replacements, technology and hardware replacements, capital software replacements, and revenue code for miscellaneous 911 grant funds received. And that's all of the grants.
Do I have a motion to establish these funds and move those funds into?
Some move.
So Stephanie moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Danny seconds, I'll give, I'll give Danny the second on this one. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, appointments.
You have one appointment to the planning commission, you have one applicant, and that is Ashley Snodgrass, and she's been serving in that position.
I'll nominate Ms. Snodgrass.
I'll, I'll make a motion that nomination seats and that the board votes by acclamation. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all. That's all for that? Sorry, it's been a little bit since we did one of those.
It's been a minute, but yeah, you, that's it.
All right, uh, building code appeals board, did we have anybody apply for that?
No.
All right, applications. It looks like we've got a bunch for our county administrator here. All right, so, um, I'll need a motion, I guess, to, uh, appoint county administrator, Mr. Josh Wilson, to regional industrial facilities board.
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Stephanie sec, uh, Stephanie moves and, uh, Mr. Jeter seconds, all vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, all right, uh, this one will be to appoint Mr. Josh Wilson to the regional improvement committee. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Mr. Jeter moves.
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, appoint Mr. Wilson to community criminal justice board. Have a motion for that.
Some move.
Do I, uh, Stephanie moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle seconds, uh, all vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
And then finally, uh, we're appointing Mr. Josh Wilson to the mountain empire regional business and community board. Uh, do I have a motion for that?
Some move.
Michelle moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds, all vote in favor by way of saying aye.
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 All right, I was getting tongue tied repeating the same thing so much. All right, county attorneys report, Ms. Kegley, do you have anything for us?
You all have my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to ask. I will ask for your authority to advertise, as I go through, uh, the general assembly's actions this year, if we need to update any ordinances, particularly procurement, whether that would be next month or the next, could I have authority to advertise those that would be routine?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion that we give Ms. Kegley the authority to read you that.
I'll second that. And everybody, everybody, everybody vote by way of saying aye. Thank you, Ms. Kegley. All right, county administrator report, Mr. Josh Wilson, this is your first one.
Second.
Well.
We snuck one in.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Maybe the first full one.
First full one.
Yeah, just, uh, on the claims, um, everybody's got their green sheets there.
Yes, sir.
General fund balance, eight million nine hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Looks like the school three hundred, right?
You can, uh, see, yes.
Yes, I did.
You can see, uh, comparison of previous years there on that graph. Um, early set claims for the month, we had four hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred eighty thirteen cents. Total claims for the month, one million five hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask, uh, for motion to pay the bills.
All right, do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion to pay the bills.
All right, Michelle moves and Danny seconds, uh, all vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Oh, it's still, still you.
Yeah, well, let's move on down to miscellaneous, uh, maybe we'll touch on the lawnmower at Keith Memorial first. They went out, uh, was, um, lucky enough to get an invite from Mr. Vickers to come out to the senior meeting. I guess that was last month and, uh, was able to take a look at the lawnmower. Um, I will say, uh, it, uh, has seen better days. Um, got quite the leak, uh, I think it's leaking oil and stuff, uh, pretty regularly and, uh, some other things. But we are lucky enough to, uh, have that still work as we speak. Hopefully I'll knock on some wood here. But, uh, um, if you have an update maybe on the mower that you wanted to say?
Well, it, it's, it's leaking oil around the head and, uh, it's also pulling oil from time to time through the valves. Uh, yesterday we kind of farted up, it looked like a tractor drove loads worth of smoke around it. It was, and it, it did that one time with me. It, you would almost think it'd never run a mower, but I, I think it leaks a little oil depending on where the valves stop. And it don't take a whole lot to make a lot of smoke, but it's still running. We, we have problems with the dip falling down. There's a ratchet that catches it. And if that, uh, happens, I've got to go out there and help Kenneth get it out. I can give you a little idea of how much time and you might say he's bragging, but it's fact. It's not. This weekend, I was out there Friday with a little league because they're going to have, uh, need water, uh, for their slides for their kits and stuff. And, uh, Friday I had to go out there, Saturday morning I go out there, I've got to take off the lock we have on the faucet because we don't, the kids will turn the water on and Amy will be paying a heck of a water bill. Sunday I go back out there after they're done, I've got to put the lock back on because again, the kids will get in there. Last night I was out there for two hours because some people from Lebanon, and let me say this about Brittany Robinson. She's helped the website immensely. We got a wedding only because the website is attractive and some people in Lebanon saw it, so. But I was out there last night, two hours. Today I've been down here, what, two and a half hours? And I, you know, I drive down here, I spend my money, my gas, and I look back and got some rough counts on how much volunteer time I do. It is probably in excess of two hundred fifty hours a year. That's only mine. That doesn't count Cindy and the people that take care of the building. That's a favor to the county any way you look at it, what the people up there do. And the first lawnmower we bought, that was bought by volunteer money. It's lasted twenty-some years and many of you have been on the board for a long time. And for the last three years I've been saying that lawnmower is each, it in its life cycle. But I'm going to try to keep it running as long as I can. I've loaded it up from Nicholsville and took it to Cox Tractor for the last five, six, seven years. Before that, I was taking care of the maintenance on it. And every trip over there, there's two trips over there to go get it. So, that's just a little bit of concept.
I appreciate that.
The thing I think we need to do, Josh, you and I need to sit down and work out an agreement. We don't have the volunteer people to do all the stuff that we do up there. We'll continue to do some of it. But I, I'm involved in everything from a total leak to booking, uh, a wedding. And it's a lot of effort and all that goes into running this. And the county has a minimal investment for the amount of people we have come through the park. I think we spent about maybe twenty-some thousand counting the water, the electric bill and all, uh, that's minimal. And the people it serves is the entire economic spectrum from a very low to the very high end. It's not a select bunch like some of the other parks in the county that target a more nerve-bunch of people that spend a lot more money than we do at Keith Park. We take in about ten thousand dollars a year. We spent forty thousand dollars in the last three years. All that's gone back in the park. If I rent the building, I pay for it just like you would if you kind of rented it.
And I know, I know I appreciate.
Nobody gets that building free except, except community service type stuff. So, so nobody in a, volunteers up there is getting any special privileges. But we can continue to operate the park to an extent. The, the bookings and all that's kind of stuff we can do, I can help manage, but I have to have some resources from the county that we don't, we just don't have people can do it anymore. We'll do the minor stuff. We'll take the money out of the budget and pay for it just like we did as we have the money. Right now, we don't have the money either. We've got some money in our budget, but when we went to the online booking, we grabbed a lot of, we grabbed fifty-some rentals real early, but that covers through December. So, at the end of the year, we're not going to have a traditional end of the year funding coming in because we already got it. So, we got to cover all that. We got some buildings we need to paint. Uh, um, we got a hole in the park, a lot of parts need fixed, so if we had the money, we'd buy the lawnmower.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's my story and I'll stick to it. But Josh, I would like to sit down and kind of earn out some details about how we operate and try to smooth this out.
I'd like to do.
I'd love to come down here, but I'd rather make this a little more smoother, bring it up in a public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to do that and I want to say that I appreciate everything that you do and all the other volunteers up there. It's certainly an asset to the county and I think, uh, and I won't speak for the board, but I think everybody appreciates everything that, uh, you guys do there. Um, kind of circling back to the lawnmower, um, as I kind of said in my memo, uh, unfortunately, looking at Parks and Rec budget, which is what this would come out of, there wasn't anything budgeted, um, for this year um, by way of mower or even mowers that were asked for, for the golf course. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. Um, luckily, as I said, knock on wood, the mower is still operational. Um, that could end today or tomorrow. Um, but either way, um, I think we can make sure uh, that we keep that mowed and keep that maintained, um, because it is important to have that taken care of. Um, now as far as, uh, you know, mower quotes and stuff, I know you had worked on getting a quote on a mower. I know Derek Franz had worked on, uh, getting a couple quotes from a, uh, a vendor and he may be still working on getting some other quotes. So, kind of where we're at now, I guess, uh, you know, with the money not budgeted for, um, I, I guess we would be just stuck with hopefully the mower continues to operate. I know Scott Services did say that they could try to help out if it did get down, um, and just to keep that mowed. Now, you know, scheduling wise, you know, try to get that taken care of, but, uh, uh, the most important thing is it will keep getting mowed and maintained there, one way or the other. You know, if there was other monies or anything that the board would want to, you know, try to help out with, I don't know. But, uh, as far as where it's allocated, where it comes from, which is Parks and Rec, we don't have anything to do with, help out with this year.
Could I ask, did, uh, Chris, are you looking into the capital improvement money that they have already in the budget? Could we pull some from that? I don't understand how that money is used.
Right, um.
It was quite a bit, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and I don't know if, uh, that, what that all necessarily can be used for, where that comes from. I'm assuming, I don't know if maybe the, does the county put in for that?
Do you know how much?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The capital, capital improvement money that you have?
Capital improvement is nineteen thousand.
Nine, they've got nineteen thousand.
That money, we want to hold for capital improvements, not the operations.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That won't follow other capital improvements?
It's, it's a little over nineteen thousand.
Is that what we've got, Amy?
It's in a separate fund from leftover from Keith, when that money was donated. It's a different bank account.
That was established with, uh, grant money and personal money.
Right.
So, it was what, when they started building the park, it was some money that they had from personal money and, uh, probably C R Keith. And that was held back. There was thirty-some thousand at one time. We took about twelve of that about three, four, five years ago and put on the extension to the concession stand up there. And right now we're looking at trying, we're going to have to do something about the playground equipment. So, kind of holding that money back so if we have to match a grant somewhere, it's not going to come close to matching a grant for playground because that's going to be a quarter million dollars probably, but, uh, that's kind of what we held it back for if we had a capital improvement. If we go spend that on operations, it's gone. And then we'd be down here asking for something else down the road.
So, that money is reserved for actual physical plant, right?
Pardon?
Or it's reserved for actual physical plant?
That's exactly right, yes.
And the others operational?
Uh, operational funds. Two different ballgames, capital and operation.
I think this is a unique partnership, which has worked well for many years. Probably the most successful park in the county. Due to your efforts.
It has worked very well. Back, what, seven, eight years ago, Sally, we drafted an agreement between the county and, and the park. And we also drafted an agreement between the, uh, uh, high school baseball field and the Little League people. And all that's worked very well for the last few years.
I would like to make a motion that once the discussions are complete, uh, if anybody else wants to weigh in.
I'm going to make a motion that we take six thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents out of supervisor's contingency fund and buy the mower.
I'll second that. All right, Mr. Jeter moves. Mr. Brick seconds and, uh.
That was the low bid, by the way, from Mead Tractor.
Okay.
The high bid was seventy-five hundred from Cox Ford.
I'm a firm believer that first impressions is everything. So, when you drive by there and you see it, it's, it's well-capped. It's beautiful.
I can't hear a good.
I said, I'm a firm believer that first impressions is everything. So, when you drive by there, you see it, it's beautiful, you know, and to have a lawnmower to go down on you and not be able to do that, I mean.
I, I guess it's a little emotional aggravating as much as anything.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, if you deal with it on a day-to-day basis, something happened to it almost every week and the choke stuff. Well, I got to jump in the truck and go out, have Kenneth get this, because one person can't get it loose. It's just, it's small stuff and, but anyway.
Yeah, whenever.
But we try to keep it looking like a merry-go-round.
You do, it looks, it's beautiful up there. It really is.
Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
One, one, one second. Your spirit, how old is that bid? Is it recent?
Yeah, it's recent.
It's recent.
Because that was a pretty specific number and there's no withering. That, that number has been out, wait a minute, no, that, that number has been out for, I got a, I got a, a quote from Cox and I sent that, I think I copied Bill on it, uh, uh, for seventy-two hundred dollars. That was a trade. Cox didn't give us the government discount. And, uh, I thought we was going to get some more quotes from Mead and stuff. We didn't get that. So, I made a call to Mead Tractor and the salesman of the park gave me a government discount. Well, I talked to Derek and Derek said he knew a vice president of Mead Tractor. He said, I'll call him. And Derek went and got the Mead, the one I got was a ballpark sixty-eight hundred. And Derek made a, a call to, to him, his buddy up there and he got, he come in and, what, I sent you the memo.
Sixty-six fifty-seven seventy-five.
Yeah, sixty-six, yeah, hundred dollars, so. I'm just saying, bowing around that. Is there any more out there? But, but folks, we've been messing with this, we've been, Bill, you wait a minute. We've been messing with this for four weeks. It's unacceptable to not have some sort of an answer. I mean, either yes or no, but you need an answer.
That's what we're fixing to get, Larry.
We're about to get that for you.
Do you want to round that up to sixty-seven hundred like Bill was suggesting?
And then we can, yeah, I would just round it up, make sure that you have enough. That way, you know, we go back to Mead or whatever. Whoever wins the bid, that we make sure we have.
You want to rework that?
Yeah, let's.
Sixty-seven hundred, yeah.
All right.
That's the best bid we've got right now, sixty-seven hundred.
Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll get you my word.
I'll get you my word.
Okay, now Josh, I'll call you. I'll set up a couple of hours and maybe go through and rework with Sally. Might pull that document out and just review it and see if there's anything we need to, to update on it. anything we need to, to update on it. Because I, I, we want to work with you. That's, that's absolutely what we want to do. But I guess I have expectations of maybe push the, push the limit a little bit, but that's okay.
You think so?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Have a good day.
So I've got a few other things, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Just to touch on, to circle back from last meeting about Terry Kilgore and Todd Pillian. I did reach out to both of their offices. However, I haven't heard back anything yet. I will stay on that and maybe work through Littler Wisco a little bit because I wanted to try to get meetings set with both of them, introduce myself as well. And then we'll kind of circle back to that and try to get them meetings set up with you guys. So ongoing on that. Couple other things that I wanted to touch on. I just wanted to highlight some work that litter control has done. One case in particular that Stacy did get a conviction on. A few highlights on that. There was an initial complaint made back in December of twenty-four on this. He had set up some cameras, I think, right away, just into January. Those cameras didn't quite work right for what he needed. He ended up using some budgeted funds to get a license plate reader camera put in. And then all in all, with all the cameras and what he had done, he had, this is a crazy number, two hundred, over two hundred and thirty thousand images and video clips he collected from January to April. And that was with four to six cameras. That's, seems to be a lot of, lot of photos and stuff to go through. But he made, you know, over two dozen visits to the site. I think he had spent several early mornings out there to, camped out, looking for the person and finally did catch them and had enough evidence to take to court and get a conviction. So that's just one example of the work that he and Jake are putting in.
They actually got a conviction?
They did, yeah.
I remember we talked about that earlier this month, and that was just a.
Do you know if that was publicized in the paper?
I guess they don't. It probably, yeah, it will be.
I think we need more of it.
Yeah.
Publicized.
Right.
That's a good, good thing.
And that's why, you know, when this, Bill had brought this to my attention, I wanted to make sure that, brought that in front of the board and the public to highlight the work that they do.
He's working currently on five cases by now.
So that tag reader, does that just automatically classify them and tell you if it's Tennessee or Virginia or?
Oh, you're talking about the cameras that?
Yeah, yeah.
The plate reader just kind of, if I understand it right, kind of highlights in on that plate and then gives a clear image of that as they come in.
Right. And you can put that plate into the system and it can tell you how often that plate is coming into.
I wonder if there's any collaboration with the sheriff's department there.
Sheriff's office called me yesterday. Was asking about cameras, if we had cameras at Fort Lightning, because of the scavenging situation. Unfortunately, we don't. We just have five sites that have cameras. Yeah, they're, they're, they're looking too.
So criminals be aware by now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was a complaint that came through the other day on one of the trash sites about, I think it was an illegal dumping, actually was the complaint. And then it came through. Bill and Stacy pulled up the cameras and actually found a scavenger, two during that same timeframe. So gave him, he was expecting one to maybe pursue and ended up getting two. But yeah, there's good work being done there.
Good job, Stacy.
We also met with AEP. I know that was mentioned earlier last month. And just wanted to highlight a few things. He had touched on some possible legislation that could make some changes. But I mostly wanted to just touch on the customer assistance programs that he had highlighted. One being the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. Says in 2024, Appalachian Power helped nearly thirty thousand Virginia customers access that program. And they continue working with groups of the federal government to maintain funding for that. There's payment extensions and payment arrangements that you can explore. And it looks like you can go on their website to find out a little bit more about that, appalachianpower.com/assist. There's an average monthly plan option. It's a little bit different from the former, like, the budget plan. It spreads the cost of heating and cooling over the entire year, which means customers pay roughly the same amount during the winter and summer as they pay the remainder of the year. Again, that's more info on their website. And then PIP, I won't touch on that. We got, presented that earlier. There's Neighbor-to-Neighbor Bill Pay Assistance. And that's again, their website. You can find that. And then Energy Efficiency Programs. He did provide us some posters, just one-pagers that we can have available if anybody wants to stop by the office. We can do that. Otherwise, yeah, right on appalachianpower.com, I think slash assist, get some, a lot of those programs.
Can you put any of that information on our website?
I'm sure we could probably put some links or something on there for that.
Yeah, I think we have an assistant section.
And then the only other thing I guess I wanted to touch on was, I'm sure everyone kind of saw the mountaintop restitution article in the paper. The county, there will be a payment. There was, as stated in the paper, is like twenty-five thousand dollars restitution coming back. Out of that, actually, to get a more accurate number, as far as what we could, can expect, to my knowledge, it hasn't hit our account yet. The way the court does it, they batch their restitution payments, I believe, like, once a month or something. So it'll be coming early this month sometime. But right around eighteen thousand is what would be coming in. I know, just to kind of get ahead of it, what a board action previously for a payment that came through was to send that to EDA's way. Out of that, that did get sent over to the EDA, a portion of that, Sally, you remember, there's like forty-seven percent of that went to the Department of Ag to help pay them back. They have said that they expect any future payments that we would receive, that they would get that similar percentage sent back to them to try to make them as whole as they can be.
Can I ask a question? Do we have an agreement to that effect, that they are first on the list?
So as far as, my understanding is, it's basically just us and them left. Is that right, Sally? Because tobacco was paid off, and that's why we're, I guess, collecting that back to try to reimburse ourselves because we made them whole, or as whole as we can make them. But yeah, it's just, would be just the two of us left.
I don't see why they're getting the money when we paid two hundred and fifty thousand back.
Well, Department of Ag paid a lot in for the program too.
But was there an agreement to reimburse them first?
As far as I, I don't know.
There's an agreement to reimburse?
Yeah.
I mean.
With there only being two of us left, you know, it's.
And two, that's going up the Department of Ag. If we need money from them, that's going to be a mark on the county.
Right.
If they've already got.
Well, it still leaves a balance. I think you paid twenty-five thousand on the, to the Ag Department. And the payment was fifty-six thousand total. So it still leaves twenty-five thousand, which is sitting there with the EDA. And that's my concern.
Right. So the, like I said, the board, previous board of action sent that to the EDA in hopes that that would help, you know, foster growth within the county. I know Mr. Kilgore is working on a project that would utilize those funds. It would be, basically what it is, is when, whether it's EDA or, or another organization within the county goes out for a grant, a lot of times you need matching funds for that. And that's what that would be most likely used for is to help with that. And, you know, kind of going back to what this, you know, eighteen thousand, whatever, change, that will be coming in, kind of precedent set to send that EDA's way so it can be used. I guess that would kind of be the hopes, once this does come in, that that would go same route as the previous restitution payment.
Well, I do have a concern with that. I don't have a problem if there's a need yet, come to the board and say, I need some money. I just don't like throwing money to the EDA. We're not seeing a lot of success in the last twenty years with projects. And I can't see continuing to have a slush fund for potential prospects. I would prefer that come back through this board in a special request to fund any special project that he's pursuing.
I think the, the one concern with that would be just the delay, you know, when these organizations go out for grants, to apply for it. They would miss, they would need to know that those funds are available. You know, and if the EDA already has that, they can, he can push that through his board, allocate that, those funds, you know, right away.
I would like to make a motion that all future funds come first to the board supervisors and then redirect it. I know we did do something kind of like that on this first round. But I would rather see more discussion with this board prior to redirecting those funds in future. I'm making that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, I don't have enough information for what you're talking about right there.
Are you talking about?
You're talking about all funds or are you specifically talking about this?
The restitution payments.
Money up there, do you have a pick?
I know.
So you're just asking for like, when we actually get the funds into the bank account, that then we would bring that up to the board?
Yes.
On where, where it goes?
Yes. Isn't that what we're doing?
Well, right, this, this hasn't, to my knowledge, it may have hit this morning, but I don't believe this has hit our bank account yet. But it is pending. It's been approved. I called clerk's office. They, it's coming our way this month. So that's, I mean, we could be proactive, I guess, in allocating this payment somewhere. Or I guess we'd wait till next month.
Are you talking about cutting out the Department of Ag as well?
I think a nice discussion.
You want to cut out, you want?
Nah.
Okay. I don't understand that part where you're coming from.
As far as what's that? I'll be glad to try to answer it. What's your question?
I think she's wondering, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How, what advantage it is for us to keep money from the Department of Ag if they think that they're entitled to?
Well, it's the first, I'd heard about that when we first came out. I wasn't aware of that agreement. And I, I don't know that there's an agreement now. Sally, would you, are you familiar with that agreement?
There were agreements in place to get those funds from those organizations, just like the Tobacco Commission. And they held the EDA responsible if the company didn't produce and then didn't pay back. And so we had to pay the Tobacco Commission back based on that agreement. This Department of Ag is the same way, based on that agreement, that any money that we would be getting in this highly unique situation that we're getting restitution from a company that defrauded the county and the EDA, you know, there's not a specific agreement addressing that. But our obligation is to the Department of Ag to pay back what we can of what we get back.
I want to do the good, I want to do what's right.
Yeah. Have a good relationship.
So essentially, I want to make sure I understand this right. But you're essentially saying that we just have a discussion every time we get restitution payment?
Yes.
How is that different than what happens now?
I think you said that you wanted to direct it to the EDA, direct it from the bank to the EDA.
That would be my recommendation.
And I say I disagree with that.
So the motion would be.
Well, we are having a discussion about it right now. That's what I don't understand. We're voting to have a discussion, and we're already having a discussion.
Yeah, but he's saying going forward, the money will be directed to the EDA once it hits the bank.
Why would we have different discussions on different? It's the same, it's going to be the same.
Well, there was nothing fixed. I think Mr. Kilgore made a.
I mean, we're having this discussion now.
They had a discussion with the Agriculture Department on the amount. It wasn't anything fixed as far as an agreement. We get a certain percentage of any refunds. I think Mr. Kilgore said he did a good job in negotiating. Was able to hold it at twenty-five. If they wanted more, he held it at twenty-five.
Right.
Is that kind of your understa-
They were the, maybe the south end of that fifty percent, yeah.
So, and two, you, and you're saying that all future funds for restitution would go to the EDA?
That would be my recommendation to follow the precedent set from the previous restitution payment.
But there's nothing saying that we have to do.
No, no, just a recommendation.
So essentially, your motion is to have a discussion when we get this in, which we're going to have anyways?
I think it's.
Yes. Your recommendation was direct it to them.
Right. Your motion basically says that every time a payment would come in, we would have this discussion.
Have some oversight, yeah. Have some oversight on it.
Did Department of Ag pay any money back like the county had to?
They were out the money that they put in, right?
Yeah, they're completely out.
They're out. That's what we're trying to.
I'm saying, did they pay any money back like we paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back during this deal? Did the Department of Ag pay any back?
You mean to the Tobacco Commission?
To whoever the.
They were a thunder like the Tobacco Commission was.
They helped them.
They're, just like the Tobacco Commission. But we chose the Tobacco Commission to pay back and not Department of Ag.
I mean, we're going to discuss it every time we get it, right? So why do we need a motion to talk about it?
No, that is, Mr. Wilson said that they wanted, they recommended directing it from our bank account to the EDA.
Yes.
Discuss, I mean, but we're going to talk about it every month.
He doesn't have to be authority. I don't have a vote. The motion, I think, on the table was just to discuss each time the restitution comes through, right?
How often are we going to see that restitution? Is that going to be a monthly discussion?
Well, it would probably be a little bit longer than next time. But yeah, it would be a monthly. I think to follow what the, maybe the agreement, or at least our understanding of the agreement, it would be a monthly discussion.
All right. So instead of that, can we, can we present?
Is that kind of like the refund?
Yeah.
Thing that we just did?
Couldn't we make a plan that we adhere to instead of discussing every five thousand dollars that comes in? Because it was supposed to be like five thousand dollars.
Right. I'm confused because the last time you voted, Eddie.
I know. I did fully, and I might have missed it. I did fully.
But you voted and we did.
I did, I did fully understand what it was.
But you voted to put that money to the EDA.
And I did make a mistake, but I tried to correct it.
You voted to put that money, as we all did.
But I think that there's a party missing in all this discussion. And it's the taxpayers that we represent. And I think we're here to represent their interest, not the Ag Department. And I know they're a partner, right?
Who funds the Ag Department though?
The taxpayer.
And so we're, we're putting money out of one hand and into the other?
I just, I'd just like to have a little more oversight on the money.
Sure, let's have a discussion next time.
Yeah.
All right. So what, what exactly is your motion?
Well, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, that's.
What is the jury?
The motion is to any restitution payments be counted for the board with some discussion about distribution.
But that's already been done.
Then it's just going to go to the EDA, correct?
I think you recommended it go directly to. We're going to vote on that.
Yes, we need to vote on that, do we not?
We can. Someone would have to. So the motion on the table, I think, would have to, I don't know, would that just have to die on the table or would no vote?
They just need to vote.
Need to vote on that?
You might want to say in the motion, restitution with the.
You might want to say in the motion, restitution with the Mountain Top project.
Yeah, let's say restitution with Mountain Top project. Discuss plan or discuss payments?
To each?
Dispersion?
Dispersion, yeah, dispersion, I like that.
Each time?
Uh, each time they come through.
And that's opposed to you go over yours again?
Yeah, my recommendation would be that going off the previous board action, directing those funds to be sent to the EDA with also out of those, the EDA then reimbursing a percentage of that to Department of Ag each time these payments come through. Then it would go, go to the EDA, the EDA would take a portion of those funds and send them to the Department of Ag. And that that would be the arrangement moving forward with these Mountain Top restitution funds.
Okay.
So I think basically the difference in our position, who has oversight? Does the board have oversight of restitution or does it EDA? And your plan is EDA and what I suggested is the board.
And the EDA board would have to vote on the use of their funds, right? Correct, so in a way we are ultimately responsible for that.
Again, we are responsible to the taxpayer in that sense as well. It's the same thing. It's either you give authority to the EDA board or you don't.
Let's go ahead with this. So are you still presenting a motion, Danny, you're still second in? All in favor of examining and discussing each individual distribution payment for the restitution of the Mountain Top Mining Project?
Mountain Top?
Timber.
Mountain Top Timber. Uh, project be discussed?
Yes.
Do a show of hands.
And can we have a show of hands for? Can we have a show of hands against? All right.
So was that in favor of what he suggested?
No, that's just in fa, that's just to say that your vote did not go through. Now we're going to do a vote.
So there'd have to be, someone had to make a?
I'll make the motion that we proceed with the previous board
President.
precedent that we give the money to?
EDA to disperse.
To disperse. In accordance with the restitution payments?
Do we want to put a cap on that? Would there be any sense in it's out? Okay.
No.
I'll second that.
I'm against that. And the reason I am is because we end up paying all the bills and all the money goes to EDA, they don't pay no bills, so.
Say it like Jeter does.
That's, that's not right. We just want to pay that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out. But you give it to EDA to do whatever they want to with it, and that's not right.
I don't think they're going to do whatever they want to with it though. I think they're going to take, they need to take, they'll take that money and put that back.
Any property they sell or anything, we pay for the property. They sell it and then the county gets left out. You're not thinking straight.
Do we want to tackle this discussion till next meeting so that we can get a little bit more clarity on that?
We've tackled it once.
Okay.
Motion.
Oh, we have a motion and a second on the floor? For the distribution of the funds as we have set precedent?
Right, it would be, any future Mountain Top restitution payments would be directed to the EDA with the EDA then paying a percentage of that to the Department of Ag as those come in.
And then what happens to the rest of the money?
So the EDA would hold that to be used for, for economic development.
That's why I was asking if there were, if we wanted to be a cap? If you want to cap it at a hundred thousand dollars or?
What do we think?
You're going to give all the money to the EDA, but as far as this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the county, taxpayers paid out.
Zero.
We're not going to get anything back.
Right.
What is the amount a month, like four thousand?
Yeah, it's four or five, but what we'll actually see out of that is going to be minimum.
Twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
It's not like we're talking.
Because you can see from the twenty-five thousand for this payment that's coming in this month, only eight, a little over eighteen thousand of that's what we're actually going to see.
What, what is the total value of the restitution that the Mountain Top folks would have to pay?
Right now, I think it was like one point two million.
Okay.
And some change probably, but.
That would be total restitution.
Total, yeah.
Yeah, and so we would be saying, let's, let's just put a cap on it to, to make it more fair, a hundred thousand dollars. And then once we reach that point, we can make another decision and have a?
So any restitution payment that would be over a hundred thousand? Or just until we reach a hundred thousand?
Just until we reach a hundred thousand.
I hopefully reach a hundred thousand.
Well, that, that, that keeps us from funding them indefinitely, which is Eddie and Mr. Jeter's issues. But it also gives them the money back enough to pay back the Department of Ag at any time and effort that they have put into it as well. Because John had, John and Penny have put effort into that, even though it wasn't successful. So would you be willing to amend your motion for that?
Sure.
With a cap of a hundred thousand?
With a cap of a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred thousand receipt dollars.
Receipt, a hundred thousand dollars received.
I agree.
All right, and then we'll, once after that point, we'll start having the discussion?
I agree.
And Sally doesn't seem to think that we're going to reach that?
Still be on the board then.
Uh, I, I suspect the same, but at, at the same time, we have a plan for it and the people that need to be made home will be made home. So, all right. Stephanie?
Yes.
This is, this is a roll call.
This is show of hands.
Show of hands?
No.
Uh, Mr. Breck, you said? Showing hands just like the other one?
Probably hold your hands up.
For, for Stephanie's proposal? Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just, no, 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 I'm not doing a roll call, I'm getting out who motioned and who seconded. Oh, no, 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 no. All right, show of hands, uh, who is in favor of directing the money as we've set the precedent to up to a hundred thousand receipt dollars?
To the EDA.
To the EDA. And opposed?
Okay. I would like to make a comment to the public, just so you'll know what we just did. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we guaranteed to Mountain Top Timber, we're now getting reimbursement, restitution. What this board has just decided, with the exception of three of us, that money will, will be directed to the EDA for their benefit and their use. The taxpayers will not get reimbursed other than possible benefits to the EDA. The taxpayers who paid for that will not get anything, zero. Thank you.
I don't think that's necessarily true.
I don't think that's true.
Because we get money back through the EDA. We have structures, I mean.
How much did we get on this?
Hold on, just a second.
You made your comment, let him.
Hold on, hold on. Let's look at the things that the EDA has built. They built the parking spot at the Devil's Bathtub, that was through the EDA. They've built the Daniel Boone Center in Duffield, that was through the EDA. That wasn't any state funds, that was EDA funds that paid for.
I think that was grants, wasn't it?
It was grants and local, uh, local match, so they've paid for that. And that, those things are a benefit to county. Uh, you might not see the benefit.
No, I did, uh, Devil's Bathtub, pardon what you're saying, there was local match on that?
Yeah, there was local money for that, yeah.
Okay.
And those funds, and the EDA worked as the, uh, as the vehicle to disperse those, just like Mr. Rose was in here earlier talking about. The EDA is a vehicle for a lot of items that we want to do that the county government's not allowed to do. A lot of our incentives, our tax incentives, that flows to the EDA, correct, Sally? And that, that is something that the EDA does for us as a legal vehicle. Just throwing that out there. What's next?
What, what about the property down here at the Brigg property? Uh, thought the EDA over it instead of the county?
The EDA is over it and they're, and you, as well as the rest of this board and, you know, the public at this point with the releases of those public plans for, you know, the long-term memory care, housing, they're all aware of that. But I don't know that they're going to make a profit on that.
So and who's, who's making the payment of it, the county?
No.
Yes.
Does EDA make the payment?
County makes payment every year.
Oh, yeah.
So we disagree with that and it's?
No, I don't disagree.
Are you sitting up?
I don't have any more, Mr. Chairman.
It's because you can add on to certain words.
One thing I would, on the regional jail, I think there's some good news with that. Is that correct with the reimbursement weekend this week?
Yeah, yeah, there was. So, yeah, as far as the reconciliation for regional jail, yeah, there was an amount of money came back into the county from that. So that was, yeah, really good news coming out of regional jail authority.
Yep. There's a, there's a lot last year. Um, all right, Board of Supervisors, comments, requests, and recommendations. I will say a big thank you to VDOT. Uh, I've noticed down Patinsville, Cross Canton, and coming up six hundred now that they have been cutting back a lot of the Johnson graphs and have been cutting back a lot of the bushes to where the property owners will let them. Uh, and that's really made an improvement, really made a lot of safety to them. So just thank you to, to VDOT and all the other work that I've been seeing that they've been doing. Fantastic, so thank you all.
I've got a comment. I've been working with Soil and Water over on the hill and we're trying to work out a deal to move Scott and Churro up on the hill. But I haven't got the details, so that you have to speak to him. Meet and call, but they didn't get back with me before this.
Up on the hill?
Where Soil and Water is.
Okay.
Where the, uh.
They're fine.
Where Scott services.
Scott services was. In that side of the building. Scott needs more room. Talked to Scott and he agreed to move up there. We talked to his boss and said it was okay. But we haven't got the deals worked out with Soil and Water, what it's going to cause and all that, so. That's probably maybe happy by next meeting if something comes out, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it'll come out and maybe it'll die, I don't know.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Any other?
I do have my usual. VDOT, that day we've covered several topics today, it's been complimentary. Key Park pedestrian roof has been repaired. And with Spring Lane, the drain pipe has been replaced. The best turnaround at Mr. Sebby's, that we provided has been improved and the removal and brushing out that intersection. They got a call from Gate Road on Nicholsville Highway seventy-one, vegetation's overgrown and that's going to be attended quickly within the next two weeks. Patinsville, they're mowing the Gate City area and a second cycle. For Blackmore, starting second cycle this week. Ambie Cooper Road's completed except paving planned for late August. Eaton Hill, it's ninety percent complete on grade and paving is planned after Ambie Cooper. Obie Creek is to start grading after Eaton Hill. Horton Summit is later in the fall after the vegetation restrictions goes away. Broken pavement is a concern over on Twin Springs Road, that's going to be fixed in the next two weeks. One thing I wanted to bring up about for discussion, uh, going back to our emergency plan for, like, Katrina. There was a lot of people that came in that didn't know what our plan was. And I think we need to have a point that everybody knows, what they need to do and where to go in the case of a disaster. And I don't think that everybody's clear on it. There might be a plan, but I don't think everybody knows better. So I would suggest that we do something to get the plan in the hands of every individual in the county. And specifically elderly, that it might be less likely to have internet or communications. T-Mobile, they're going to put another satellite on the tower in Nicholsville, so we'll have T-Mobile service. And there's been rumors that they're going to add a tower on Long Hall Road between J and T and again, more on Will and Ridge. The Daniel Boone Railroad, Mr. Dishman had planned to be here today, he had other commitments, so he couldn't make it. But one thing I will pass on, Daniel Boone Railroad Board's been delayed again. That's getting sewer across the railroad. And they did find a underground cable, which means they can't mechanically drill or bore through into the railroad. They've got to use a water pressure system now to get that underneath, so they're working on that. Got a concern about Fishmill overgrown and that's being addressed by some of the local people. And I think that's all right, thank you.
I'll just mention that coming north by Food City down in Moxon Gap, they're going down to a one-lane road for a while. And in Duffield too, I don't know what they're doing in Duffield as far as working down, but they're working out there too, so be careful in those two places.
Yeah, Duffields are making two left turn lanes off of twenty-three. That would be really helpful for some of the congestion that we see there. So that's great.
Uh, one thing I did forget, and I promised the person I'd mentioned, was the Virginia tourism meeting yesterday in Whitfield. Mr. Pike sent me this information. Uh, Virginia reports thirty-five point one B in visitor spend in twenty twenty-four, and that's at five percent. So they're getting back to the pre-pandemic levels as far as Southwest Virginia. Full visitor spending in Southwest Virginia will be around Labor Day, that means funding. Southwest Virginia hotel demand and sales have outperformed both Virginia and the United States in twenty-four. So we're having a lot more people coming into Southwest Virginia tourism. Airbnbs and lodging rentals is at fourteen percent twenty-four.
I think Brittany Robinson's doing a good job of tourism.
Yeah.
She's doing a great job.
It's definitely become more visible on social.
I hate that I missed the Harriet Tubman. I hate that I missed that.
It was so good.
It was delicious.
I heard that it was.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for everyone that didn't get to come. It was great. I, I can't wait till they open, what was that, the nineteenth, I think?
Okay.
I'm excited to see it.
Yeah, it'd be great. All right, uh, we don't have any items for closed session?
I think we do.
I thought we did.
I don't think we do.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Wilson, I think you've scheduled a closed session, Dave?
I, you had mentioned to me that there may have been something that we needed to go into closed session about, but I don't know if anybody else had. I, I didn't have any details to go off of.
What's the process of asking for closed session, Ms. Kegley?
Usually the chairman will know ahead of time.
Yeah, next time if you want to go.
Were you aware of a closed session request?
I know that you said something to Josh about that.
You didn't say anything, so you didn't tell anybody else?
You had said that board members, you had talked to certain board members.
I requested a closed session from you.
It's, it's up to you all as a board to decide that, not really. I mean, it.
It would be a vote to go in closed session, is that right, or no?
Yeah, and.
Typically, typically, when you have a closed session coming into a meeting, what's the process of getting to this meeting?
You all as a board have talked about whether you want to have a closed session or not. Usually somebody will run it by me about what it's about, whether it's even legal to do. I've not heard anything about what it's about, does?
Which I didn't have.
So you're not aware of?
Well, I'll go.
Well, why didn't somebody tell me that? I'm in the board.
Because I asked you what it was about.
All right, no closed session for this one, but you two can discuss.
And if we have a reason to go? One, we can go to you as, I guess, the chairman if it's far as details.
Can we discuss going into closed session now for personnel? Ms. Kegley?
Personnel being the county administrator or me?
The public works.
That falls under the county administrator?
That would be under the county administrator. It's up to you all as a board, I think.
Do we have anything? What are you wanting to discuss, is it?
Well, I don't think we discussed it much, Jim, before a meeting. I, I'm not familiar with how to request a closed session.
I guess.
I requested you to.
Yeah, I guess it's my understanding that the board, as far as personnel goes, it would be myself and Ms. Kegley. If there is any other, all other personnel would fall under me. So if you had a complaint or anything, you would bring it just to me and we could talk about it.
Right.
Or anybody could come to me. Why do you know about who or anybody I ask?
Oh, my gosh.
But.
Okay, all right, you two, let's meet up after this.
Well, I, I don't see it.
Straighten it down.
Mr. Jeter, what's, what's your opinion on this?
Just whatever they say about this.
Whoever wants to talk to me about any personnel will be available.
Well, if you and Mr. Jeter have some- Well, if you and Mr. Jeter have some sort of agreement or grievance, then you should bring it up to Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson thinks it's big enough to bring up in front of the whole board for a closed session, he'll bring it up to the, to me, and we'll make sure it gets into the next closed session.
Now, you're saying in the previous cases, when there's closed session, all the board was aware of what we're gonna be discussing when we went in?
I think you should have been, and whether you were or not.
I've never known what we're gonna be discussing in closed session, to be honest with you. I don't think I've recalled any incident, but I've been informed beforehand what the discussion was gonna be about.
At least the chairman needs to know, and somebody needs to run it by me to know whether it's-
Well, I didn't know how that worked. I thought, I thought he would be, I thought he would be the contact, which I did.
Yeah, and I went to Ms. Kegley, but we didn't necessarily have anything to go off of, because I didn't have any details.
What should have taken place, say we need more information to make this happen, you should have come back to me and said we need more information, which I do gladly provide, I, I didn't know how that worked. I've never asked for it. And the reason I asked, I was approached with two supervisors to do this.
That wasn't a majority, though. There, we would need at least four.
So you're saying every closed session has four members that wanna go into closed session?
No, but I, I would say that you would have four supervisors that were aware of what was gonna be discussed in the closed session. Or you, you would at least have one county administrator who was aware, uh, which, oh, it sounds like when he came back for additional detail, there wasn't.
No, he didn't come back. We just had one conversation.
If it's about his employees, he's right, you need to talk to him about it. The personnel is to talk about him or me if you all wanna have a closed session. If he has an employee issue that he wants board input on, he can have, ask for a closed session through your all's input about one of his employees. But for you all to go into closed session to talk about your employees is to talk about him or me.
It's kinda like a chain of command, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you have something-
But you're aware that I had requested it, and you didn't ask me for additional information?
Josh first, and then I didn't know what it was about. You didn't tell him what it was about.
I didn't know I had to go into details, to be honest.
You've been on the-
Because I've never known any details of closed session.
Well, from now on, if you wanna go into closed session, ask me what it's about, and we can discuss whether it's proper.
I thought, I thought it was the first time.
But anything future, if it's personnel other than myself, I guess, and Ms. Kegley just kind of, you know, talk about it. And if we wanna bring it up-
So you have a choice whether to go into closed session or not? If the, if the board, if the board members wanna have closed session, then you can say, no, I don't think it's appropriate based on what you told me.
It is a void.
Right.
You're, you're saying you have that obligation to refuse it?
Well, it'd be my, it's my discretion, my plea.
And that's generally how complaints should work, right? You should bring up your complaints to-
Well, I was approached by a couple supervisors, said we need to have a discussion about this.
All right, but-
And I went to Mr. Wilson, and it said we would like to have a discussion about it.
These, these couple of mystery-
Nothing was asked me of-
Hold on, these couple of mystery supervisors, have you all talked to Mr. Wilson about your complaint? Have they let him know? All right.
That's why I wanted to-
You all each individually need to go and talk to Mr. Wilson about your complaint. Let's get that on the record, and then once you do that, we'll see how we need to escalate it from there. He may have a plan to fix it, and you all wouldn't have to do anything else, right? Uh, and if not, if Mr. Wilson is unable to, to handle it or needs the board's help, I guess, is, is the better word.
Yeah, we'd go into closed session.
Then we can go into closed session on that.
I'd stand, I'd get that. I manage the restaurant, I understand that totally.
Yeah, you don't vote CEO?
Don't go to the owner first. Let's work it out in-house first, then go.
All right, we, the last thing we've got is adjourned meeting to September third of twenty twenty-five at nine AM. All right, we'll see y'all then. Thank you.
Where are you going?